I'll give it to you.
One minute. Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the December 2nd monthly workshop. I hope everyone's well rested after a nice Thanksgiving holiday and break. We will get started with the school start times. I'll kick it off to Mr. Connor.
Thank you, Board Chair, and thank you. Good morning, everyone. And today's topic is around schools' start times. As you know, legislation was passed around two years ago mandating that middle and high school start times be changed statewide. And today, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the feedback that we've received through our community meetings, surveys, and our staff, as well as some potential options for us and recommendations for the board as we move forward, as we consider the 26-27 school start time mandate. So the mandate is now regulated by law and basically states that beginning in 26-27, middle schools cannot start earlier than 8:00 a.m. and high schools cannot start earlier than 8:30. Elementary schools are not restricted in any way by the law. And after that law passed, the next legislative session, there was the ability, another law was passed, to allow districts to actually submit a waiver not to implement the mandate based on meeting certain criteria. I think the intent of that law was well-intended. There was a lot of research around why students in high school need some extra sleep and starting later would benefit them academically and in a variety of other ways. I also know, and the state realized, that there are some logistical challenges, financially, logistically, and burdens on families' personal lives by creating such a significant change district-wide when you're talking about all of your secondary schools. And so that provision was provided through a waiver process. Where we're at with that with the state right now is actually that state rule is in development. So that form for to actually submit the waiver will be available, is not available yet, but will be available soon after the state rule is completed. And I know there is a workshop on that, I believe, with the DOE next week. So more to come on the actual waiver process and the form that districts will have to submit. So knowing this over the last couple of years, we have been receiving feedback in a variety of formats. We have been doing our inside community meetings. And a part of those meetings, we always bring an aspect of school start times into the conversation. So back in May, we had our first inside community meeting at Northport. Then we were at Woodland in September. And actually, tonight, we will be at Booker High School. And so these are various in-person opportunities for us to hear from our constituents as we travel across the county and receive feedback on a variety of topics, including school start times. We also, back in September, we submitted a survey out to our families. We emailed that out, put it on our social media. We had some really good response from that. And we had, really, when you look at it from a superficial level, you see there is 37% in support of the change as opposed to 45% opposed to the change. But you really got to dig into that data to kind of understand where it lies. So when you look in totality, you know, we had well over 1,300 responses overall. But when you break it down by parents and families who have middle and high school and elementary, you start to see the breakdown. And what we found is that in middle schools, about 50% of our families were in favor. However, this proposal does, would not have changed much for the middle school start times because they're already past the eight o'clock timeframe. At elementary and high school levels, who would have been impacted, only 33% of the families were in support of the change. And those were the, those are the families who are most impacted by the change in the legislation. And with families with multiple children, we had 40% supporting the change, while 60% were either neutral or opposed. So really, what was the overarching analysis from our families on the start times? At the elementary, there was a strong pushback for a 7:45 elementary start. And that is pretty much the latest that we determined that we could start with 7:45, just based on our transportation, making sure that we have enough buses to turn around and pick up the next group. And so having families, young children, awake, ready, out by the bus, in the dark, you know, those were some major concerns that kept coming up. Obviously, sleep and readiness came up often. Parents said that earlier routines don't work with their work hours and after-school activities. There were repeated concerns around transportation, just having dark bus stops, longer routes, tight commute windows. And then earlier elementary dismissals would increase the supervision needs. Many families believe that, you know, having kids home earlier in the day puts a burden on them for childcare, whereas the older students could obviously be supervised in other, in other ways. After-school jobs and activities were a concern for most of our older students. The later middle dismissal would cut into those schedules and many support that later middle-high school times, but not if elementary shifts to an earlier start time. Then in April, so back it up a little bit, we first, before we even did the families, we actually surveyed our staff. And we saw some strong opposition, about 61% overall, in changing the times for middle and high school. And the breakdown, you can see here of all the different staff by grade levels who participated into there. So we had a lot of support from our high school individuals and staff members who participated in this survey. Most of the feedback that came from staff were from high school. And this group did show a high interest in not changing the times. Elementary staff leaned opposing the change. And middle school staff showed the highest rate of support, again, because they're not affected as much by the change. So the analysis of that, very similar. Transportation and logistical drove most of the staff concerns. You know, when you talk about timing of routes, making sure traffic is considered, and just the tiered alignment, all of those were noted concerns. The commute for staff and the childcare needs of our staff members did conflict with the later middle and high school dismissal times. Many of our staff do rely on second jobs or they have very fixed schedules, and that would be disruptive to them. The consideration around those after-school jobs, sports, tutoring, losing time with the later release. Coaches also noted that the reduced daylight would have longer nights. And I would say this too, I've, having experienced this in another county where this change was implemented in Hillsborough, you notice in high school, when you're supposed to be sleeping in and getting an extra rest, that the coaches have their kids practicing actually earlier in the morning before school starts because of the less daylight they have at the other side. And then there were concerns around younger students being home earlier, like we had with our parent survey, as well as just believing that overall, the challenges presented with changing outweighed the benefits. So in consideration of that feedback, we also wanted to talk a little bit about our bus transportation. And we know that we have experienced some, some challenges this year in bus transportation. And we are very optimistic about some of the things that we have got planned and we're working through to make sure that we don't have a repeat of some of those challenges into the future. But this all kind of dovetails right into the conversation between the mandate, the law that we have to consider, and then transportation revisions that we also need to consider to make sure that we're having efficiencies in process there. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kemp, who's going to talk a little bit about bus transportation, the services provided, and then the overall recommendations that we will have for you. And it's twofold. The overall recommendation related to the law and then some changes within some school-based start times as a result. So, Dr. Kemp, if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, and Madam Chair, Board. It's great to be back here for Thanksgiving, an opportunity to serve. I wanted to talk to you truly about the need. When we get challenged with how do we operate better? And what can we look at for reliability and efficiency? How can we maximize the resources we have? I just wanted to share with you some of the services that we provide. Because when people think about transportation, they think about, oh, we're just taking them to and from school. Our transportation department is tasked with a lot. If you take a look at the list on the PowerPoint here, you can see, yeah, we do general education transportation to and from school within the qualified homeschool zones that we're allowed to transport. We also look at district-wide, any county-wide, district-wide magnet, specialty transportation. We do ESE, special to the site, depending upon program. We do specialized transportation to the, to the site for ESE. We do ESE partial day. And so a lot of people don't realize, we do half-day this, partial-day that, based on exceptional ed needs and what kids, what the kiddos need. Well, I look at pre-K. We do, we do pre-K, we look, we do alternative school countywide, which requires resources. We do CTE midday with the Polytech transfers and that go to and back, back and from our, back and forth from our high schools. We have that opportunity in the middle of the day. We have the teen-parent programs. We look, we have Mega Kenny Vento, which is those that, those that are challenged with housing at the moment. And we do that with foster care as well. We provide that service. And we do field trips, we do after-school activities, and we also look at charter, charter, the charter school options to provide transportation for them if they so choose to contract services with us. So when you take a look at all the services that provide, our transportation team, it's way more than just taking kids to and from school. And that puts a tax on our, our capacity and our resources. So with a part of the recommendation, in addition to the waiver that Mr. Connor's talking about, is that we look at the recommendation of our high school, middle school, and elementary start times to be consistent. In the comprehensive traditional schools, we need a consistent start time. The model for funding us, and one of the challenges we've always had is we've run, the district has run negative in funding. But it's designed that every bus can be used at all three levels. So it's really designed for three consistent start times from a funding perspective. Every time there's an alternative start time, it pulls resources away, the buses that cannot be used for every level, every day. So we have to look at maximizing our reliability and efficiency. We have to look at our, the funding, the underfunding that we are under from the FFP program and what our cost of current services are. You've heard me say this before, we can do, we can do anything. We just can't do everything all the time. So we have to look at how can we, how can we be reliable and efficient? What's our basic core services to provide? So along with the recommendation of these consistent start times for the traditional high schools, the comprehensive schools, by doing that, it frees up capacity along the way. If you want to, yes, sir.
So just to reiterate on this slide here, two, two recommendations. So what I would like to recommend to the board is that we do submit a waiver.
Yes.
And that we waive ourselves from the mandate, keeping our order comprehensively the same as it is now. So high school's going first, elementary K8's going second, and then middle school's going last. And so that would be different from what the mandate requires, but we do have the caveat of submitting that waiver. That's the first recommendation. And then, as Dr. Kemp continues on in the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about some adjustments. The three times that you see here are really for our traditional comprehensive schools, that this is more broader stroke of the start time, 7:30, 8:30, and 9:30. With the caveat, as we go through the remainder of the slides, you'll see when we talk about Venice Middle, when we talk about Pine View, there'll be some adjustments made because of their specialized programs and things of that nature to address. So I don't want, don't be misperceived this as every middle school. This is, we'll carve that out as we move forward.
Yes, sir. And that, and logistically, for an operational standpoint, 100% in support of the recommended start times. It works well for us logistically. And the more, the more sites that we can get on the same time schedule, the better use of resources. It'll help us cut into that $8, $9 million a year loss and that we're running in the negative for providing services. Take a look at this slide. This is 32 of the 43 schools. If you take that, there's really no impact. This change does not impact at all 32 of the 43 of the schools. I highlighted, you know, even those we partner with, our Charlotte, our Charlotte County, LA Anger. I just highlighted that, just to let them know. 32 of 43 of our schools will have no impact by the recommendation of this start time. Some of our schools do. We have nine of 43, nine schools that would be 15 minutes impacted, just a minimal impact of 15 minutes, and there's one school of 30. And that would be for the comprehensive traditional schools. Now, with that said, usually if there's an alternative start time, there is a, there's a reason, a county-wide, district-wide transport. You know, when you think about Oak Park, think about Pine View, and when some of these at the bottom, that we've kind of spelled out here as to the justification or rationale, why things are changing and why, why they're on alternative start. At one time, we had nine different start times, just accommodating communities' wishes. By going to three and then dealing with the alternative start times that we're required to with our specialty district-wide transport, typically, the justification is, it's a county-wide transport issue. One of the things that also benefits, Mr. Connor mentioned, one of the things that benefits us is the lead time that we need to get that county-wide transport at peak traffic times. So when you think the, an hour from the elementary start time of 8:30, it gives us 9:30 start times for Oak Park, 9:30 start, 9:30 start time for Park, Pine View, Grade 2-8. And we'll have Booker, it's going to continue with the VPAC county-wide transport. We have regional transportation for Bay Haven, which is a regional transport issue. So usually, if you're not in that traditional start time, it's because there's a county-wide transportation issue. And we're trying to make sure that we deliver the level of service that the community expects, being on-time, reliable, and efficient. It's really critically important. So when you take a look at the slide that you have up, you can see the Pine View, the Pine View, we have Booker Middle, those that had any type of change or no change based on the exception, the exceptions that we have put in place for county-wide transport. There are some one-offs that we have to look at based on programmatic needs and how we can best serve kids. But for the most part, you're talking, 41 of 43 of our schools have minimal impact of 15 minutes or less. And we think that's, we think that's in the best interest. I did include the charters down here at the bottom. We will have conversations based on the direction that the superintendent and you give us today on this time. We will have conversations with the charter schools.
Yeah, and speaking to that, Dr. Kemp, I noticed that there is one typo at the very bottom. So it says, say, 9:30 for SLA. That would remain the same at 7:30. That was initially in the conversation, to move it to 9:30 with the remainder. But as we're having those conversations around Venice Middle and SLA remaining at 7:30, so that is a typo that we haven't opened, we haven't updated on there. So 7:30 for SLA would be the proposed time.
That is correct. And originally, without, and the decision was made based on county-wide transport needs. At that time, there were no county-wide transport needs for Venice Middle. So just like Sarasota, Haren Creek, McIntosh, Green, those other 9:30 start time middle schools. I kind of got lumped into that. But we looked at specific issues with VMS and decided to remain at 7:30 with them at this time. So, but if you take a look at charters, we'll have conversations with each charter based on your direction today. That is an option for them to contract with us if it's, if it's available. I have tasked our transportation team with making sure that we provide our primary services to our kids. That's a priority of making sure we get kids to and from school at each level. And we will be happy to entertain accommodations after we get to that level of excellence of getting on-time performance. And just so you know, those conversations will take place starting today based on feedback that we get. Now, some of the strategic rationale for the start times that Mr. Connor had mentioned, really what it does is it's a better use of, it's a better use of resources for us based on our capacity. We have a lot of capacity issues with all those services you see we have to provide. We only have so many bus drivers to do that. By having consistent start time, it frees up, it's going to freeze up, free up bus drivers in those time areas that allow us to better deliver services. So it'll increase our level of service. We will look at our on-time arrivals and drop-offs. That extra 15 minutes, currently, we only have 45 minutes for county-wide transport after elementary start times. By giving that additional 15 minutes, that gives us a little additional lead time to do the county-wide transport at high, high, high-peak traffic times. Also gives us more buses, balances the bus load across the times. You can see, in the next slide, you'll see 145 buses. At the 7:30 is what our demand would be. We'd have about 154 at 8:30, and we'd have 123 buses utilized at the 9:30. That just frees up our capacity to have more buses available to possibly, to route better, to route more efficiently, to have, to monitor bus loads, bus load counts, to make sure we have more buses available to address some of the overload issues that we've had now in the past due to too many start times, too many resources being utilized at different times, which impacts our, our capacity. So for us, the buffer time, the increased use of our capacity, of our resources is just kind of working smarter. Just for information, right now, on the system capacity we have for transportation, we have 191, we operate on 191 routes today, routed buses, okay? So that new model would free up about 35 of buses every, every, every day that we would have available to help us do coverage and with absenteeism and things of that nature. That's one of the challenges that we work through is out of those 191 routed, we probably have anywhere between 25 and 50, depending upon the date, time, and year of call-ins and absenteeism per day. And the challenge that that presents for transportation is no different than our schools, when they show up and they don't have subs, right? So when you, at 5:00 in the morning, when we have 25, 30 call-out, just for your information, we're doing coverage with unders, with the available capacity to cover that, make sure our kids get to school. So every morning is kind of like a brain teaser. It's really, it's a great opportunity to think at 5:00 in the morning, when you have 30 call-ins and each of them have to be covered to get kids to school. Their transportation staff and that dispatch team does a great job. Thankful for them. And the goal for us moving forward, as we look at processes, we, we have to continually review our internal procedures and processes to make sure we're delivering our core required services at a high level of excellence, and we're delivering on-time, reliable, and efficient. And that we're being fiscally responsible with maximizing FFP ridership. It's in full transparency. In the past, we might have had more resources. We might have had more bus drivers. We might have had more opportunities to accommodate special requests and requests outside the minimum requirements of our, of our service. We're going to have to look at all those. We're going to have to look at that. We're going to have to look at internal procedures. We're going to look at some things as we move forward with our new processes. And our, and the support that you've given us with the new platform that I believe we will talk about at another workshop, and how that's going to impact our ability to be reliable and efficient. So those are our future steps and considerations. 100% in support of consistent start times everywhere it possibly can be. And I'm also 100% in support of, you know, the one-off issues that we have to look at based on programmatic needs and county-wide transport. This superintendent, right, Ms. O'Day, has tasked everybody that sits over here with looking at the departments, especially in the time of fiscal issues and fiscal shortfalls, to make sure that we're operating as reliably and efficiently as we can. We're going to continue to do that. And it's, it's with the spirit that we're going to do it at the highest level of service for our students. And then we will look at accommodations moving forward on a one-by-one basis to ensure it doesn't impact our level of service. That's our goal. That's our goal is to do it and meet the, meet the standard. And we're looking forward to the changes next year. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Superintendent, and any questions that the board might have regarding start times.
So at this time, thank you, Dr. Kemp. That will conclude our part of the presentation. If we want to turn it over, Madam Chair, to discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, members of the board. Are there any questions, comments? Mrs. Barker?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for this thorough examination of start times. I know that when the legislator, legislature started talking about start times, we all sort of thought, ooh, that will, that will be a challenge. And I'm grateful that there's now a little bit more flexibility in terms of what works for individual school districts to be able to support a waiver around that. I, I will, you know, just for the record, I will say, when I put my school psychologist hat on, I can't ignore that there really, there's a robust body of evidence that does show that later start times are better for teenagers and their sleep cycles and their academic performance. That, that is a fact. I do believe in this case, it seems to be outweighed by the logistical challenges that that poses, both for families and for staff. But I, I would be interested in the future, if the legislature chooses to more fully fund this mandate, having the conversation again. But at this point in time, when we don't have the funding to, to do it, it doesn't. But at this point in time, when we don't have the funding to, to do it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. And I will echo what other parents of young children said, that having them home at 2:30 is really very challenging and would require us to then expand probably our after-school options, our wraparound services. So there's, there's a lot, a lot to consider. But overall, I, I think this makes sense. This is a good plan, and I love having some of the consistency around, especially the elementary start times. I'm always like, wait, are we starting 8:15 this year, is it 8:30 this year? What time am I supposed to be there? So I appreciate the consistency there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barker. Mrs. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to also thank all the parents and the teachers that emailed us with their concerns, and obviously Superintendent Connor took those into consideration and the team, so I appreciate that very much, to know that we do listen, and we listened a lot, because when you start messing with bus times and start and finish times, that causes a lot of angst. And with us already enacting a lot of changes, I think with the transportation, if we can keep it consistent with, within the scope of our budget, I think that serves our kids and our parents, teachers, the best. I just have a question. On the absenteeism with our bus drivers, with the, the ratio of the staff to the absenteeism, is that considered high for that level?
We have experienced a higher level of call-outs and absenteeism, not just in transportation, but we're experiencing with food service, we're experiencing it across the board. So yes, ma'am, to answer your question, we're averaging, have that absenteeism information. Just to give you an example, November 14th, we had 47 call-outs. We had, out of 178 drivers. So when you think about that coverage that has to take place, and it's not just 47, it's 47 elementary run, middle run, high school run, into AM and the PM, so it's kind of like 47 times 6, that's what's got to be covered. So yes, we're averaging 44, 50 out. It's higher than normal. We do have unassigned drivers, what we call unassigned drivers, available for coverage when there's a bus break down, we do have that. The issue is not more drivers, we can't fill the positions we have. So it's not additional allocations. You supported us with allocations. The issue is, what incentives can we put in place? And we're working with that across the board. And contractually, when people have time, they're allowed to take that time, so we work with them, we've talked with the team, we put incentives in place, but we are experiencing higher absenteeism or call-outs, especially during before and after holiday times.
So what are, what are the main reasons of the call-outs for?
They vary, it varies. Some call out, they apply for personal, and we can, now we can deny personal, and often we do, but if they have sick time, they're allowed to take that. They more than, just like by contract, if more than three days, they have to provide a note. But it's, it's a benefit that they have, and they're allowed to take that when, when they so choose, and we've asked them to work with the team, we've asked them and let them know the impact that it puts, not only on the children and the team, but their colleagues and what we're working with together. So, and that's for food service and everything else. We have, a lot of it's workers, some of it's workers' comp, some of it's leaving, some of it's planned leave. So we work through those issues that we can, and to get the coverages that we can, that's why there's so much change with substitute drivers and, and things like that, because there's a lot of coverage happening that the rest of the world doesn't even know about, because they just, school starts and they think, they had no idea what took place to get them there. But, so there's lots of, lots of varied reasons and lots of reasons that they're entitled to. We've asked them to do everything they can do to limit absenteeism.
Okay, thank you, and thank you to staff that put this all together. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I'm glad that the question of absenteeism comes up, because that obviously is, I think, one of the big monkey wrenches that comes in just the day-to-day operation of transportation. But before I really, I'm concerned when you say, now it's food service and it's, it's sort of heading down the line. I would challenge that backwards, that we have an HR issue, and that we need to find out, from an HR perspective, what's going on, that seemingly across the board, to get the answers to that, and then when we're having our conversations with the union, I, I think all of that is part of the conversation that needs to occur. Once again, I'm, as you know, come from a for-profit world, and that I always would attribute to a leadership issue. I'd look at, but if you're now looking at it across the board, there's a wider range of issues that can go wrong. So I'm, I'm not challenging anyone, but I want to ask the right questions from this point moving forward, because now it's, I didn't think it was food service. Today is the first time I'm hearing that. And so if it's, I actually did have a quick conversation with the superintendent yesterday. I said, well, I don't seem to hear that in the teacher category. Well, not so much. I guess we do hear it in the teacher category, too. So if it is across the board, then I think we need a deeper dive from an HR perspective in terms of recruitment and retention issues. The other place that I'm, I'm concerned here is that you listed all of the services that we provide, and I, I only made one note, the ESE transportation services that were half-day and partial-day. Especially now, I'm looking at that, I'm looking at a financial analysis is really what I'm asking for from transportation. And the reason why I'm asking for that is, particularly around ESE, there's always conversations about charter schools don't have to take kids with special needs and so forth and so on, and if we're already 49th or 50th in funding, and we're already being challenged with all of these particular issues, I think it's important for not only the board to understand this financial analysis of transportation, but I think it's important for the public to know it as well. So I would like a quick down and dirty of that, and then particularly around ESE, what, what are those special services in partial and half-day, and what are the charges that we're incurring above and beyond the normal transportation? Lastly, I'm, I'm going to ask this question, what can go wrong? Assuming we're, board will say yes to these changes, what could go wrong?
My answer to that question would be, this would be a major improvement for us, as far as capacity and resources available during the critical three-tiered times. Every time there was an alternative start time, you mentioned 8:00 to 8:15, anytime there's that, it takes a group of resources out from an already taxed resource capacity. To me, I see no downside in the consistent start times as far as capacity is concerned, as long as we continue to focus on delivering children as our primary core mission, our, our minimum requirements to transport children to and from school, and all these other services that we're legally required to do, and we take a hard look at the over, the accommodations and all these additional things that we've done in the past, that honestly, these additional start times is one of the reasons why we're $8, $9 million running short every, every year in funding. We need to maximize our funding and our ridership, which means, since we don't have the same level of capacity we've had in the past, whether it's driver availability, whether, whether it's an absenteeism issue that might impact it, we have to be able to deliver our services at a real, our primary core mission at a, at a level of services excellent. And then, once we get to that point, especially with optimized routing and the new platform and better communication with the stakeholders, we will be able to, we will be able to improve services and then look beyond at all the additional accommodations that we provide on a one-by-one basis. So what can go wrong would be an internal look at our processes that may upset some, that we cannot be as accommodating for things outside of what we're required to do. If we want to be fiscally responsible, that, you ask for an example, that can win.
So then that just leads me to my follow-up, which I had here, is I see that one of the proposals here is that it increases the level of service, because you're standardizing the times and minimizing some of the options outside of that. What is that standard now? How do you measure it, and what's the new goal?
It's basically driver capacity, and I can turn it over to Dr. Little or Mr. Dumas that work with this every day, but when I say it increases our level of service, it increases our capacity to have drivers available to provide the services that are needed within those start times. Again, every time we pull out a start time, that's 13 to 15 buses that are pulled out of the three-level tiers that impact our ability to, to service kids. Now, what does that mean for the remainder of the three, if we have all these different start times? It means higher bus loads, bus counts, more at bus stops, or longer rides. The benefit of this is having that, when I say in level, increase our level of service, having additional capacity at those three start times allow us to shorten drive times, better balance routes, bus stop loads, and total bus count loads across the board. Those are, our key is to get every school, to get every, our goal is to deliver every child that is eligible for transportation to and from, to school on time, barring accidents and 75 and variables we can't control. But if it's a variable we can control, Mr. Edwards, that's my expectation, and that's why we put 15 more minutes in after 8:30 drop time for comprehensive elementary. So that extra hour in the morning, I mean, that extra hour we need to transport, that extra 15 minutes makes a huge difference. Every one of you know, if you leave your house five minutes later than you normally do, you get, you know, you get punished. And so our, our drivers are dealing with that every day. So impacting the level of service, there's some to be determined with that, and how can we maximize having those available 35, 40 drivers available, along with our unassigned drivers, to cover the absenteeism, to put less stress on the stakeholders, to better support our schools and kids? That's our target. Our target is to balance those three-tiered times. That's the way we get funded. It's funded on a three-start time model. And when you had nine different, in some cases, nine different start times, that's just, maybe that's a level, that maybe that's a service that we're going to have to look at. Can we, we can do anything together, and we will do anything that you direct us to do, but we can't, we can't continue to do everything and provide the level of service that this community expects and deserves. So we have to be smart with that.
Well, I like the answer of increased capacity of drivers. That makes me happy, because it tells me that your program has a mission and has a goal and, and how you're going to service it. But I'll, I'll circle back and say, I am anxious to see the financial analysis of transportation as a whole, because to your point, I heard you at one point say that we're losing $8 to $9 million in transportation. I think it's important for the board and the public to understand the why's behind that, and it circles back to always, in my mind, unfunded mandates, and I'd like to keep shining those to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that it, our primary mission is academic achievement, and that requires getting every student to school on time and ready to learn in the classroom. So I commend you, Superintendent Connor, and your team for bringing forth a plan that allows that and increases the probability of it. If Superintendent Connor, if you're going to look at the human resources side with your team of the absenteeism, I would be interested in what is the cost of that absenteeism? How many additional, for example, whether it's food service, bus drivers, how many additional staff are on the payroll and not necessarily like in a substitute position like teachers are that aren't paid unless they come and substitute? Is there a cost there? And how does, if indeed there is, I would think this board would want to look at it, or you would want to look at it, and how do we get around and get back to? That is an issue, absenteeism is an issue. I've, you know, principal for 14 years, if you've got a significant amount of your staff in any way, shape, or form that's not coming before a holiday or after a holiday, that's, that's a major academic achievement and issue.
Well, perfectly said. We get the, we hear all the time, well, just hire more drivers. It's, it's not, that's, that'd be great. We have, right now, just to give you some of that information that you asked for, we have 247.5 bus driver allocations. As of right now, 225 of those are filled, right? We're constantly advertising, we're constantly recruiting, we're constantly bringing people in. A lot of people don't realize the time it takes to onboard, once we get through that pro, once the transportation team gets through that process, hiring those bus drivers, then they have to go through the CDL training. It's a six-week lag. So, you know, the, the issue is not more allocations, the issue is making sure we're maximizing all resources that we do have on staff right now. So when you think about, we're never 100% filled, it'd be great if we were, but with 247.5 allocations and 225 of them filled, and up to six weeks lead time for training and getting them in, if we can keep them.
So you're saying vacancies are the actual core of the problem?
That's correct, and, and turnover. I mean, that, that we have, we do, we, we experience.
Similar.
They come, we get them, we get them trained.
So what's the answer?
You know, less scrimmage on that, you know? If, if we had that answer, that would, that would, that would have been executed, you know?
Well, I know we raised the salaries for bus drivers at one point, and it seemed, at least temporarily, we were getting positive feedback on that. Is the cost of living just erase that? I just would be interested in that piece. It just sounds like you've got a great, your recommendations are great for academic achievement, which is my focus, and increasing the probability of that, but if we're going to have absentee issues and routes not filled, still not where we need to be. So I would look to, you know, where does that stand in our overall budget? Because it seems like if, if you're making consistency, which we should have between schools, and you have the three distinct times, which is increasing that probability, I would want to look at the absenteeism and what are some of your recommendations, or what's the research tell us out there?
And we also have, just to, you know, just to give you the data, 72.5 ES, we have our attendance, so it's not just bus drivers, but the attendance that's required. We have 72.5 ESE attendant allocations. Out of the 72.5, at the time of this printing, 70 of those are filled. So if our bus attendants that we have requirements for to support special ed children, we're, we're doing okay with that. It's just, it's just a challenge of turnover. It's not, this is not specific to us. Every county in, in the state is having issues with driver availability. We can recruit, we can market. I've been in a district where we paid them the most in the region, and it helped for a little while. Then what happens is your neighbors, your neighbors get together and they do the same thing. So there's always competing for the same.
Sounds like we've done that. And it sounds like we're back where we started.
Right. And it's just, you know, from an HR perspective, you know, Mr. Edwards brought it up, but from an HR perspective, we're constantly recruiting. HR is supportive of working with us and trying to get the, we just can't put anybody in a bus, you know? They have to meet certain requirements and go through that process, and it's just the lead time, you know? We're having to compete all the time with the private industry, I mean, with CDLs. I mean, we, we get them CDLs, and you can go Kroger, delivery, Amazon, UPS, you know, you can, we often lose our CDL-certificated people to higher-paid private options. So I'm not, I'm not convinced, as long as I've done this, I'll be honest with you, I'm not convinced that more allocations is the answer. I'm not convinced that always paying them more is the answer. I think we have to get to a point where our routing and our efficiency, that we focus on the basic core services we have to provide first, you know, like with anything else. If you get too stretched out with accommodations, doing this, we don't do anything well. And I think we need to do it at an excellent level, and I know they're tired of hearing me every day, because I'm over there, Mr. Connor, Ms. O'Day, we're going to deliver our, our primary core mission at a level of excellence that, that the community deserves, but we have to focus on what we're required to do first, then look at accommodations.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, a lot was covered, I appreciate it. You know, I think when I, we talk about the core functions, safely, timely, efficiency, and then with the focus of academics achievement, as Mrs. Rose said, I'm glad there's a lot of honing in on the absenteeism. I know Mr. Connor shared that with me, and my heart kind of dropped, because it felt like we were back to where we were a couple of years ago, and you think about the ripple effect of that kind of disruption. And I know, so I have no doubt you guys are looking at it, and to me, I think there's some streamlining that certainly, any kind of a change, even if it's nine minutes, it does cause heartburn to anyone, right? So to everyone who emailed in, staff, I appreciate the responses. I appreciate, Mr. Connor, you replying as well. I think that, but there's a reality that we have to do this, you know, looking at a macro level, and you guys have done that, to get us back to a functioning component. And I think if I wrote this down right, and I know Mr. Edwards also mentioned, the eight to nine million, we're in the red, and you think a lot of that is associated with the specialty, like accommodations?
Yes, ma'am.
So, and again, if we're talking about contingency planning, which I hope we are able to narrow in more on how we can improve upon those absenteeism, because it's very disruptive. And I wrote down the CBA, so it sounds like that's a piece of it, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'm glad you brought that up. I'd be remiss if, we have a great relationship with SCTA on the support side. And we've had this, we've had this conversation weekly, the team, we meet with them weekly. And we've had, and they're aware of the absentee issue, absentee issues that are impacting. We've also had conversations about, you know, how we can do things differently with the existing language and conversations we need to have as a team moving forward. They are receptive, and they understand that sometimes the benefits that are provided via contractual language was not the, and the way they're being used by the field is not necessarily the intent in which that benefit was given. So they're very receptive and working with us. I'd be remiss, I mean, we have a great relationship with them. And I'm confident that they'll work with us in creating some contractual changes that will encourage reward and attract, recruit, retain the right people for, to be in those jobs and help us with this issue. They're equally concerned with the absenteeism because they hear it as well.
Well, that's incredibly encouraging to hear, because I think of how do we solve the problems? And again, there's a number of notes that I wrote down, but it sounds, it's very evident that you guys are on top of them. And so anyone from the public standpoint, I'm glad to see that we are. Because there is really, when you come to the time change, as you noted with the different surveys, it's somewhat all over the place. And if you plug one hole, it creates these ripple effects. I am adamant that the extra sleep, I've read lots of surveys that, or studies that say they don't actually utilize that time, right? So even though the data is there that to support the value in it, are they actually maximizing that? And so then we have the entire logistics component, which is big, it's significant. So this over, you know, this overview today was really helpful. I think I do want to make sure we continue to hone in on the absenteeism. Again, even on the food nutrition side, there are questions. And, you know, there's a limit to how much we can offer, right? But in the private sector piece, when I think about the drivers, I think we're constantly, and just look at Amazon, especially right now, I mean, they're everywhere. This is not new. We train them, and then they, and then they get taken. And so that'll continuously be something that we have to keep our focus on. But I appreciate you saying, listen, we can't necessarily solve that right now, but there are things that we can execute right away that will give us the support that will ensure our students are coming to school on time and safely. And so with the adjustments, I don't think, I think the most significant was Ashton with 30 minutes. Is that right? And so I don't take that lightly. I hope that they will understand the necessity of that, and hopefully that communication was there. But I appreciate all the work. And I'm happy with where we landed, and I do look forward to, you know, additional input on some of the financial impacts that even Mr. Edwards also addressed. Mr. Edwards, up here, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Dr. Kemp for that clarification of SCTA. I think that was an important component, and that is what I meant. I always found when I asked them a question myself about language or accommodations, neither of us want bad employees or bad behaviors. That doesn't make any of us look good, and I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you very much. And so moving to next steps, Mr. Connor, do you have the direction that you need?
I do, thank you. I appreciate the valuable input from each of you as a board. And I think we've got clarity on where we need to move. I will keep you up to date as this form for the waiver is finalized by the state. Like I said, there is a workshop taking place next week. And I would imagine that soon after that, at an official state board meeting, they will approve that form, then we'll be to bring that forward. And I'm not sure if it'll need board approval or not, or a signature sign-off, but I'll keep you apprised.
And then leads me to final always question of communication, especially even the minor tweaks. What does that look like once that's approved? We just make sure, okay. All right. Well, that concludes that item. We move over to attendance policy.
All right. So our next topic is shifting away from staff attendance more to student attendance. And this was a topic that was, the majority of the board has asked to bring forth. And so I'm going to do a little something out of the ordinary to start this presentation off. And it's going to require your participation, board members. This is a quiz. We're having a pop quiz today. So turn your mics on because it's going to be the first one to answer.
To see who the overachievers are in this.
All right. Okay, first question. What do you think this number means? What does it mean? Anyone want to give it a guess? There's no penalty for being wrong, like the ACT. Hours of academics. All right. Hours of academ, it is the actual number of days that a student goes to school from kindergarten to 12th grade. So we have students, if they don't come to us for pre-K, we have them for kindergarten through 12th. We have them for 2,340 days. How about this number, 375?
Average number of days absent from K to 12.
All right. Average number of days absent K to 12. This is actually the number of instructional minutes lost when a student misses just one day of school. 375 minutes lost. How about 234? Come on, be brave. All right. I don't have any more brave souls. This is the number of school days lost when a student misses one day every other week over their K-12 schooling. Just missing one day every two weeks, you will have missed over a year's worth of instruction. This is actually what we define as being chronically absent. And the last one, 900.
How many do we have chronically absent?
Very good guess. But it is actually the number of instructional minutes lost when a student just misses five minutes, just late five minutes. They lose two and a half days of instruction, just being five minutes late every day. Pretty interesting, huh? So here's a couple of statistics that I want to share with you. Nationally, more than 10% of kindergartners and first graders are chronically absent. Students who are chronically absent in preschool, kindergarten, and first grade are much less likely to read at grade level by third grade, which would make them four times more likely to drop out of high school than a proficient reader. A student who is chronically absent any year between grades eight and 12 is more than seven times more likely to drop out of school. And going back to that 234 days, 234 number, by high school graduation, which is 13 years of school, a student who is chronically absent each year has missed at least 234 days, which is more than a full year of instruction. So when we talk about attendance, this is essentially the categories that we're looking at. Optimal school attendance is fewer than nine total absences during the school year, 5% or two days a quarter. Chronic absent is missing 10% or more of the school year, which is, out of 180 days, at least 18 or more days. And habitually truant is being 15 or more absences within a 90-day period. When you look across absenteeism in Florida, in the 23-24 school year, 31, over 31% of students across Florida were considered chronically absent, meaning they missed 10% or more of the space. Sarasota was among the five lowest districts with 20% of students chronically absent. The highest districts in the state had up to 57.5% of their students being chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism is more than 50% higher now than it was back in 2019, 2020. So just again, looking at the district by district across the state, these are the top districts, meaning having the lowest percentage of students who are chronically absent. You can see Collier and Santa Rosa and Sarasota in the top three. So that is a celebration, although 20% is never satisfactory. But we are seeing the trend much lower than the state average of 31.5%. These are 21 or more days. You can see that Sarasota is up there in the top five. Districts are six. And with a percent of 11.6% who are 20 or more days absent, compared to about 20% statewide. Now, what are our trends currently, right now, from the last three years? We are trending very well compared to last year. If you look at the light blue, our numbers are lower than they were in 2024, and erratic based on 2023. But we are tending to see a better trend of chronically absent students now. So that's always a good trend to be on, as well as habitually truant. If you look at there, this year, we are trending lower than last year. So the things are moving in the right direction. So I'm going to turn it over to our Student Support Services team and Ms. Rachel O'Day, who is going to share some of the services we provide and what helps us keep students in school and reduces those chronic absenteeisms and habitually truant.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. So obviously, it is our core mission to educate all of the students in Sarasota County School, but if they are not present, they cannot learn. So this is definitely an area that we focus on, and we take great pride in the advances that we make in improving these outcomes for students that are either chronically absent or habitually truant. Because again, we believe a student that is school age, their main job every day is to be a student. And our main job is to serve them. So we need to be together to make time happen. And that work begins right at the school level with what we conveniently call our attendance teams. And they're focused on identifying the root cause of the issues that are occurring to create the truancy that has occurred with a family or a student or group of students. And once we figure out those root causes, we work on the different supports that we do have at the school level, and then some external supports to support the families based on those needs individually. If they find themselves in severe situations, they do refer to our truancy workers and then our Student Support Services team at the district level. And at that time, we are making home visits. We are layering in additional referrals for either district-level support or external support partners with community partners and providers that work towards resolving whatever those issues are we've identified. And we're also looking at our higher-level intervention, which is truancy court that you're going to hear from Dr. Hutchinson on. But they're very much focused on making data-driven, triangulated decisions to figure out what's going on with students and why these are challenges for them. When we look at that, one of the things Mr. Connor charged us with this year, we've done a lot of great work in advancing and being very data-driven with Performance Matters and different reporting mechanisms. But this year, the expectation was to get a one-stop shop, get a dashboard going, something that we can look at at the school level and the district level together. And the dashboards that we introduced to the board earlier this year when we were talking about PM1 data, doesn't just have performance data, it also has attendance and behavior. We consider those things our three key performance indicators when looking at the success or lack thereof within our students. So these dashboards are utilized to, again, who are those students falling into chronically absent and habitually truant? We triangulate the data between performance, behavior, and attendance. And if attendance is the issue, that goes right to that attendance team, and we work through our processes to find supports that we need and then elevate them to the district level for more intense support that I went over briefly in the previous slide. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hutchinson to again, talk about that intensive intervention and support of truancy court.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Day and board. Thank you for hearing us this morning as we get a chance to celebrate some of the good work that's happening across our attendance teams as the superintendent and Mrs. O'Day have shared. We really are looking at, this year, we are improving our attendance rates as we compare them to last year specifically. And when we think about all of the proactive work that is being done in our schools from our school-based attendance teams and our district-based attendance teams, it is making a difference. However, there are times when our students are habitually truant. And so when we start looking at having them with 15 days absent within any 90-day rolling period, and so this is an ongoing monitoring that does take place, you know, we do look at considering truancy court as a way to provide our families with those wraparound services so that our kiddos can get to school on time, ready to learn every single day. And so that doesn't just jump right to truancy court when we have someone who is out of school. You know, we do have a number of steps that we take prior to coming to a truancy court referral. And so we begin with a five-day letter. So for all of our students who have five absences, especially five unexcused absences, they are receiving a letter from the school principal that says, hey, just an FYI, you know, you have five absences. And then we do another letter at 10 days. As we talked about, we really want to make sure that we are limiting the number of days that our students are out of school. Sometimes they're ill. If they're ill, they're going to be home, right? But when we start looking at those unexcused absences, that is a piece that we absolutely need to decrease so that our kids are at school on time, ready to learn every day. When we get to 15 days, we enter into a contract with our families. And so the contract becomes very specific to that individual case. Our truancy workers, who are doing a great job of working individually with our families, are meeting with our families and helping to develop this contract between the school and the family. And that's a place where we're able to identify what are some other barriers that we have to help our families overcome. And so we work really hard to do that. Ultimately, if that doesn't work, then we do look at a referral to going to truancy court. Over the last several years, we've had a great partnership with Judge McHugh, who has taken on this role, and we really appreciate her support there. And so in that truancy court role, our families come in. You know, we as a school district get an opportunity to share kind of what has happened, what we have done to support them. And then we look at how do we, with the court assistance, support that family in setting some clear expectations for when it comes to school attendance? But also, what do they need to be able to overcome those barriers that are preventing them from getting to school? At that point, a plan is put together, and we go back to the school-based teams who help to monitor and implement that plan along with the families. And, you know, ultimately, the goal is that that works and that we have gotten to those interventions that have been able to provide that support. But in the event that they don't, then we do have other connections through the truancy court avenues that'll help us to connect with much more intensive supports, either through looking at SINS or FINS, which is children in need of supports or families in need of supports and services. So that, again, we are looking at that holistic wraparound support for our families in those most extreme situations. I am happy to share that as we look at the data that has transpired this year compared to last year, we are seeing a huge decrease in the number of referrals that we are making to truancy court. And that's a big win. That means that the proactive work that our school teams, our district teams are doing is making an impact earlier so that our kiddos are getting to school on time, ready to learn every single day. And, you know, if we look at this year, we have through quarter one, 36 cases. 12 of those have already been closed, which means of those 12 cases have met all of the goals of what came out of truancy court. When we compare that to last year at quarter one, we had 72 cases that had gone to truancy court. So that is, we've already cut that in half. And again, I can't congratulate our school teams enough, our families enough, and our district support and our truancy teams, who are taking those very intentional steps to be able to, early on, address the attendance concerns so that we get our kiddos to school on time, ready to learn every day. And we are excited because we're looking ahead to 2026. Judge McHugh actually is transferring out of the role, and we've been able to hire a magistrate. And so we're in the process of working with the magistrate to even try to double the number of truancy court sessions that we're able to offer every single month. What that's going to allow us to do is, again, in a much more expedient manner, be able to intervene with our families so that we're able to get our kiddos to school and be able to continue to focus on that academic excellence that we expect of all of our kids. Now, across the district, you know, I am very proud of the work that we have done internally, but also with our external partners when it comes to helping to message the importance of school attendance. This year, we were able to, as we do every year, we partner with the Patterson Foundation beginning of the school year. September is Attendance Awareness Month. And so we have at the elementary level, the Attendance Awareness Poster Contest. You know, we're working very closely with our school-based teams, the Patterson Foundation, to establish some consistent messaging across the district, which is great. This year, we were also excited to be able to implement a program called MIA, so Motivating Improved Attendance. We're within the first 35 days of school, we were able to intervene with any families who had 10% or more of absences, of missed schooling. So we go back to that definition that the superintendent shared with us, which is chronically absent is more than 10% of the school year that you're missing. 35 days, if you have more than three absences, we're there already in the first month of school. And so we were able to build in incentive programs with those families through the partnership with the Patterson Foundation to be able to intervene even earlier than we have in the past. even earlier than we have in the past, which I think has helped to contribute to the improved attendance that we've seen within our schools. And then we also look at really building a culture within our schools with those relationships. We know that kids come to school because they have the relationships with the adults that are there and with the children that are there, and they feel safe in that environment. And so we have been very proactive about building just really supportive cultures where our students are feeling really connected to the school, to the families, and to the staff that are there. And then ultimately, we also recognize that usually attendance is not an isolated entity. There is something else that's going on there. And so we look at that collectively. We're involving our school-wide support teams. We're involving our attendance teams, our social workers, our school counselors, because we know that if kids aren't feeling good about coming to school, that's going to contribute to them missing school. And so know that all of the work that's being done is because we don't want to target this just in an isolated event. We know that there are mitigating factors that play into student attendance, and we're just really intentional about trying to address all of those so that we can ensure that our students are at school on time, ready to learn every single day. And then these are a couple of examples that we've had of some of the district-wide messaging that's gone out. A little bit different for elementary, middle, and high, you know? And so we want to target those populations as well. And again, thank you to the Patterson Foundation helped to create some of these for us and as we entered into our Attendance Awareness Program throughout the beginning of the school year.
So looking at our student progression plan, we always, you heard a little bit about practice that we deploy at the district and school level to make sure we're addressing attendance concerns to the best of our ability. But then we also have to ensure our plans that we're writing as a district due to the state or just district plans are in alignment and supportive of practices and that also our policies are aligned. So we're looking at policies, plans, and practices and having that synergy amongst those three areas, which you're going to hear about, more about the policy from Mr. Parento. But within the student progression plan, what it outlines currently is that we are giving expectations for communicating for an excused absence. We want to make sure that we know about an excused absence within three days of the absence. If we don't hear within three days, that automatically converts to an unexcused absence. In addition, in this part of the progression plan, it also outlines some high-level examples of an excused absence, which I believe there's an opportunity to further clarify that. And I believe the board also agrees and superintendent, and you'll hear some of those recommendations from Mr. Parento. But right here in this plan, it just talks about school-related functions. So any performances related to sports and athletic events, arts and music events. It could also be therapies and other things that kids are receiving that are ESC or have mental health needs. Those are things that we do excuse, and those are worked through at the school level. And then you can also see that we have some information here about our habitually truant students, making sure that if they're progressing down that road, that it is reported to the principal immediately. And then we activate those attendance teams that you heard me discuss in a previous slide. And the next section of our student progression plan that addresses anything related to attendance is about makeup work. And within this part of the plan, all we're saying is that if you have an excused absence, that you are given the opportunity, a reasonable opportunity to make up that work and also for full credit. If it is an unexcused absence, we still provide an opportunity for students to make up the work, but there may be an academic penalty. And again, that would be very situational. It depends on what's going on, what we're making up, and by when. And those things are also determined at the school level. And then we also note to make sure that attendance records aren't used for any type of performance criteria to get into a program. We don't use it that way, and that is unacceptable, partially, fully, not at all. We do not do that. So that's also listed in our progression plan. So I will turn it over to Mr. Parento to talk more about our policy.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Day. Board members, thank you for letting us be here this morning to provide you these recommendations on the policy. What we currently have in Policy 5.40 says that district procedures, which is the student progression plan that Mrs. O'Day just referenced, will prescribe student attendance requirements, including but not limited to provisions for unexcused absences and opportunities to make up work, as well as reporting absences, tardies, and early dismissals. The current policy also says that students shall be excused from any examination, study, or work assignments, or homework for observed religious holidays. But currently, this policy itself does not have examples that can guide schools so that it's consistently implemented across the district into what is an excused versus an unexcused absence. Also in the policy currently, we say that in order to be considered present for the day, a student must be in attendance minimally four. And then we give the amount of time that a student must be present throughout the school day, which is two hundred minutes in a seven-period high school day, two hundred and seventy minutes in a three-period high school day, two hundred minutes at the elementary and middle school levels. So as for recommendations for strengthening this policy, we feel that there's a need to define those unexcused versus excused absences so that schools have a better understanding, and there can be consistency from class to class, from teacher to teacher, and from school to school over what that looks like. Also determining a timeline for parent and guardian notification to the school of an attendance absence, right? We know that sometimes students are absent for three or four days in a row. They may be sick. So giving them that time after the student returns to school, I know that when my kids have been absent, sometimes I've left a doctor's note sitting on the counter because I forgot to put it in their backpack. And there are a lot of parents who that happens to. So if we give them a little bit of a buffer to provide that, it can also cut down on some of those unexcused absences. And also aligning our attendance tracking with our current practice. Where we are now in our student information system, we do track that by period, where the teacher can go in there and look, the school administrator, district administrator, families can go in there and see, okay, my middle schooler was absent from sixth period today, but they were there in first through fifth, and then seventh and eighth periods. So we can now see that by period at those levels. So aligning that with what we're currently doing. As we get into recommendations for excused versus unexcused absence, a lot of these are what you would expect in what we currently have in our student progression plan. Illness, injury, medical appointments, serious illness or death in the family, family emergencies, religious holidays and observances, court appearances or legal obligations, those school-related activities like athletics or extracurricular competitions, and then insurmountable conditions. And that is, you know, severe weather, where a road's flooded and the family can't get out and get to school. Unexcused absences, just skipping school, not providing documentation within the required timeline, family trips or vacations, missing the bus or oversleeping, repeated early dismissals or late arrivals, marking those as unexcused if they are happening over and over again, so that Dr. Hutchinson's team can get in there and try to intervene and figure out what some of those barriers are to being on time or staying for the full school day. And then non-school-related personal activities. So those would be the recommendations that we have for inclusion into this policy on what that looks like so that we can give guidance to our schools and our teachers.
So at this time, that will conclude the presentation part, and we can move into discussion.
Thank you very much for that. And just to clarify, what's been in front of us right now is a proposed draft with the blue line. Okay, just want to make sure. All right, board members, any comments, questions? Mrs. Rose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there still a connection between unexcused absences and driver's license for that age group? Could you just speak to that for public purposes, please?
Yes, there are still requirements within Florida statutes that if a student misses a certain number of days unexcused throughout the school year and during their time, it can impact their ability to get a driver's license.
Can you, I don't, I didn't know that. Can you elaborate? Do we know what that metric looks like?
I can pull that up for you.
Okay, interesting. Thank you, Mrs. Rose.
I can tell you while he's looking, it's Florida Statute 1303.27, and it talks about what the criteria is there.
Okay, I'll look that up in a second. Mrs. Marinelli, good point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad Mrs. Rose brought up the driver's license because I was going to ask that and it to be explained, because a lot of people don't understand that being in school has a direct impact on their driver's license. But I think the public needs to know that that wasn't something that Sarasota County enacted. That is legislated across the board for every district in Sarasota. But we have to follow that legislation, and that takes a lot of accurate data collecting because that is normally not something that when a parent finds that out is very happy about. But that is, we are following the legislation. So thank you on that. I just have a concern, and I know everybody does, this has been going on, but to make sure that every school, that it's consistent in that reporting of what one school might say is an excused absence, another school might say no, how the marking is done by period because it varies. So I know, I don't know if we can a hundred percent close that, but how is that monitoring, I know you guys are talking about it, how do you propose to do some of that monitoring to make sure it's consistent?
Yeah, I think that definitely setting the expectation and reinforcing that through communication and verification, audit processes, there's a lot of ways that we would do. The checks and balances, compliance is always, you know, consistency can be hit or miss depending on a variety of factors, right? And so those are things that they're tasked with is to make sure that as we now have focused the student information system that is live, and we can see period by period, we can start to monitor trends. And where if we see a kid is unexcused maybe for six out of the seven periods, but is excused for one of those periods, then maybe there's an inconsistency that we can identify and then rectify on the spot. So that on-time data piece is really going to be helpful. But bringing clarity, like providing these examples of excused and unexcused is going to help as well, because what one school may deem as an excused is maybe not at another school, and that consistency just of language and expectation will be very important.
Thank you. Also, I know I read this past week where the legislature is looking at attendance. So I'll be really curious to see what their recommendations are going to be because attendance has been something that has always, we've had to deal with. So if anybody finds that silver bullet, I'd like to know about it because I think they'll be able to market that. But I have another question, too. On the lower grades, like kindergarten, first grade, they go to truancy court?
You know, so in those situations, you know, really, that's when we're working with the family because we know that when we're talking about elementary school, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, if they're not coming to school, that's a familial piece that we need to address. And so we're really working proactively to try and decrease as many of those instances because we want kids to establish those really great attendance practices and habits very early on. So we are intervening at the school level very early with the families, especially if it's their first time. You know, kindergarten now looks very different than when it was. You know, when I went to school, it was half day and I napped during half that day. That may have been intentional on my teacher's part, but, you know, ultimately, though, we want kids to establish really good attendance habits. We know that as they start getting older, you know, it's very different trying to get a five-year-old to school than a fifteen-year-old to school if they don't have those habits. So we work really closely with those families. But yes, in certain instances, if we, that isn't making a, getting traction from the school teams and helping parents reestablish that, especially as the children have compulsory age, then truancy court is an option that we use at the end of that process. But really, it is, we're doing all that proactive work ahead of time to try and get those kids to school on time, ready to learn every single day, and working with families so that they understand the importance of school attendance.
Thank you. Then absenteeism and sports. So can you go into that a little bit? If we have students that have absenteeism, are they allowed to continue to be in sports? Or if they miss periods, are they allowed to, especially in high school, be in the sports?
So that is definitely on a case, school by school, coach by coach basis. But typically, from a district perspective, if a student is absent that day during instruction of a day of a competition, that they would not be participating in that competition that day. So if you are not there for school, you shouldn't be there for the game, if that makes sense. In terms of whether there's habitual truancy or chronic absenteeism, the coach can work, and it typically is very effective when a coach is mentoring about the importance of being in school and being a part of the team and all of that. So there's a lot of encouragement for athletes to be in school because they are a part of the team, and that typically works very effectively. But to a district expectation, if you are absent for school the day of a competition, you are not to be participating in that game the day of the absence.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because I know how pivotal a coach is into a student's life. So usually, if you go to a coach, you mention a concern or anything, they handle it pretty effective where it doesn't rise to a higher level. So they are very important in encouraging kids to come to school. Well, that's all that's... Oh, I had one more. What, with attendance, what are you finding is the number one barrier? Besides like illness, you can't really...
And I think that actually is probably the number one barrier is illness. And then the second is really, I think, prioritizing and helping families understand the importance of school attendance. You know, it's easy to say, you know, gosh, I just don't, you know, maybe feel like going to school today, right? And so when we work in a proactive manner with our schools, and it starts not just at our youngest levels, but every time there's a transition into another school level, our school teams work really hard to help those new students understand, like what is really important about coming to sixth grade in middle school? And how is that different than elementary? And what are pieces, from a family perspective, that can be put in place to help ensure that your child is attending and coming to school? And so, you know, illness is definitely number one, but helping families just understand our habits, our routines, and the importance of school attendance, and really prioritizing that when it comes to, you know, and understanding the difference between, I just, maybe I woke up on the wrong side of the bed versus I truly am ill in those scenarios. And so we continue to work throughout the entire school year, even over the summer, as our families are coming in, especially new kindergarten families coming in, getting used to school and experiencing school for the first time. We're talking to them about school attendance and helping them understand just how critically important it is that they are arriving. We also want them to know that if there are barriers and there are issues, that we are here to support them. And so part of that kind of introduction into the school environment is helping families know that our school counselors, our social workers, our truancy workers, you know, all of those teams are there to help families so that we can remove barriers for them coming to school. So if there are financial, you know, financial needs that a family might have, you know, let's say, you know, they don't have clothes or uniforms or whatever the case may be, we have opportunities to help them there, and we have resources to help remove those barriers. And so some of it is just continuing to get that message out and so working really hard to connect with our families so that if there are those non-illness barriers, we are able to help remove them so that those kiddos can come to school.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that went into the presentation and everything. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Marinelli. Mrs. Barker.
Thank you. This is something that as a parent, I think I started talking with people in Sarasota about probably years ago because I would send in an excuse note, you know, for a family wedding or whatever, and I might get three different answers. And I always found that to be very odd. I just, I hadn't experienced that in other places I had lived. So thank you, Mr. Parento. This is going to make my life exponentially easier. I love that we are fleshing out a little bit more, and I love that it is consistent with the student progression plan. All that is very helpful. And when we're looking at data, to be able to accurately say, compare excused absences versus unexcused absences at a county-wide level, I'm not sure our data was accurate in the past because we had inconsistencies between schools. And there will still be some of that, but I appreciate this a lot. I do have to address the elephant in the room, which is sort of this ongoing conversation in the community about the fact that we have changed our meeting times to be in the middle of the school day, and that continues to be a discussion among both our parents and our students and our staff. And because our meetings are during the school day, I think we need to have a conversation around what that looks like for student participation, staff participation, parent participation. And I see here as one of the excused options with pre-approved school-related opportunities such as college visits, academic competitions, athletic competitions. What would you say would be the difference between, say, a pre-approved college visit with parental permission and attending a school board meeting to advocate for a change in policy to your student publications?
So I would say that when you're talking about a school-related activity, you're talking about a school-sponsored event. So typically, schools would develop a field trip along with a sponsoring teacher to go visit, you know, the University of Florida and do a college visit. Or a coach is sponsoring the, obviously, the travel to another high school per se to compete in a competition. So it's really a sanctioned, a school-sanctioned event is where that is specifically referenced. So it's really a sanctioned, a school sanctioned event is where that is specifically referencing.
So just to understand correctly, and especially for our parents who are scheduling college visits, et cetera, a college visit to UF that is done with the school would be considered an excused absence, whereas a personal college visit that the, the parent takes the student on would be considered an unexcused absence?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. And what about, so for example, we have our star students who are scheduled to come at our next school board meeting at 9:30. Are those students' absences unexcused or excused? Because I think they come through Big Brother, maybe not the school, right?
They do. We have a district, actually a board-approved interagency agreement that allows for that. So that would be a district-sponsored sanctioned event.
Understood. Thank you. So what it looks like to me is that as this policy is written, there is no opportunity for civic engagement, for students to engage in any form of civic engagement with an excused absence. Is that correct?
That is correct. In terms of what we have outlined now, this is, this is not an exhaustive list. So I think, you know, discussion could be had related to, are there other, are there other things that we wanted to add because it says not limited to? So we could detail further out, more examples. But I would also be cautious because I want to make sure that as I started at the beginning of this presentation, every minute matters. And so we want to be very, very, I would say, very clear about what's excused and unexcused because, you know, missing one day is 375 minutes of instruction, you know? So that could be a slippery slope when we start to talk about what other things we want to create as excused absences. So I just caution the board as we move that ball forward in the conversation that I am of the, I'm a proponent of, we have you for 180 days, I need you in school 180 days if possible, barring any illnesses.
I would also like my children to be in school 100 days. So I understand that certainly. That said, I, I did look at, you know, across the state and across the country, what civic engagement looks like, especially because we've gotten this directive from Florida in particular, that, that civics is a really important piece of our curriculum and we should be encouraging our, our students to understand their civic responsibilities. And I did not see across the state of Florida, policies specific to civic engagement. I did see in the district, I used to work in Fairfax County, Virginia, allows for one day of civic engagement per school year that is excused. And I saw in the state of Delaware that those absences for civic engagement are excused. So, you know, I understand that in general, this is not a conversation that folks are having. However, we have put ourselves, you know, we have sort of self-imposed a little bit of a dilemma here, creating these meetings at a time during the school day. And I, I think that does require us to at least discuss it. What I'm seeing here is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the principal were to approve an excused absence for either, you know, a wedding is not on here, a family wedding, or for example, attending a school board meeting or a county commission meeting or a hospital board meeting, would the principal have the option to excuse that absence?
So the, I think the intent of the policy is to bring consistency and, and less subjectivity, right? And what one principal would consider a wedding is excused or another principal would not, right? So the more clarity we can provide in this policy to guide that decision-making, and I do get it, there may be something that falls outside of the scope and you have to make a judgment call, that, that's life, right? You know, there's a little bit of gray in everything, but the more that we can be clear, black and white about what is excused and unexcused, I think the better we're all off with the consistency piece.
Agreed. Okay. Well, I will leave that with the board then. I, I think it's an important conversation to have and I am, I am concerned that we have put ourselves in a position that creates unnecessary disruption. I yield the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. First, let me say this. The data around the attendance teams year over year, wow, congratulations. No one said that, but congratulations. That's so well done. The second thing that I had on my list was probably similar to where Mrs. Barker was going, but I don't, I, I heard Mrs. O'Day talk about excused absences and makeup and how that's treated. And so what I would prefer, so that we don't get ourselves into this, because I think the will of the board is, is very clear of how they want that to be handled and why they switched the times. So not having to go through that conversation again, what I would like to see in the policy is a little more codification around an unexcused absence with parental permission, similar to a family trip or a vacation, which does happen. I know lots of families that go ahead and take their, their child out of class for a wedding or for a vacation, but it's in conversation with the teacher so that work is sent with the child, makeup is handled with the child, and it's a conversation around making sure that Mr. Connor's objective of academic achievement is, is in fact zeroed in on to the best of our ability. And then there was some conversation that Mr. Parento had about periods. So if someone missed second period but was there for the, you know, was there for first, missed second but finished up, you know, all of that can be with parental permission, in my mind, at least the ability of the, for the student to make up that work and not be overly penalized for choices that parents are involved in. So that's, that's where I'm really looking, particularly in a state of parental rights. I'd like to see it a little more spelled out in this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Rose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For decades, traditionally, we've had robust civic opportunities in student government, student council, students sitting on parent, teacher, student organizations, school advisory councils. There is a multitude of built-in robust opportunities in our system. Examples, Sarasota Middle School, students were able to change policies at the school level. I think that I want to be very frank. This nonsense of insisting that students participate in the politics of school board is being pushed by highly aggressive political organizations that have had a face in this boardroom. And I'm not going to pretend like it's anything else because it isn't. Students are being aggressively enlisted to come here and get involved in politics. That is wrong. And for people to be trying to change policy to excuse that, when we just went through what it means, what our core mission is, is academic achievement and what it means to miss school, there are a multitude of robust opportunities for civic engagement for students. And as far as changing policy to add to excused absences, I think that that is something that should be the consensus of the board and not directed by individual board members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This, as a, I'm really happy to have this conversation. I will say that a couple of years ago, shortly after, I believe, who was our interim at the time? It's escaping me. But we had, I had asked because I were concerned about the high numbers of absenteeism. And I don't think that many districts across the country were taken aback post-COVID about how extraordinarily high they were. And so at that time, I had asked for us to do an evaluation. We were in the middle of a superintendent search and so lo and behold, it's been some times since we really were able to dive in. So I really appreciate the analysis year over year. And I'll echo what Mr. Edwards said. I very, I applaud the work because it is very prescriptive with family by family to really ensure that they're, they're showing up and that is, that's the focus. And as was said, if they're not in school, they're not able to learn. So I really want to applaud you and thank you for identifying a lot of different pieces on how we can really articulate the consistency. I think that's a very good point and, and we find that with a lot of policies, I know we're not talking about dress code, but it's the same kind of situation where the, you know, the implementation and consistency does vary. But the more we can send the message of what that expectation is, I think the, the better. And Mrs. Barker, your point of having, you know, three different children from three different schools and that not being there. So what, whatever we can do to, to help support that, I think, you know, it would be interesting post, you know, after a year, looking at the analysis of, or an audit of some sort, you know, I don't want to add more things to it, but to really evaluate what, what came out of each school, we'll start to be able to narrow in on the, the consistency thereof. And I think that just takes some time for us to get there, but making this a priority and highlighting what, what is excused, not excused. I did actually under I, I think it's section B.5 on the first page, I did highlight, did circle that as well, where it said pre-approved school-related opportunities, college visits, academic competitions and athletic competitions. So I know that was asked before, college visits, college visits, excuse me, was the one that I had, had inquired about in my mind was, does that mean if a family wants to do a visit or not? Mr. Connor, you thankfully clearly articulated that. And I think that maybe instead of, I think we have school-related, but maybe school-sanctioned. I don't know what the, but, but just to make, because school-related, it could, it's a broader term. So we may be able to tighten that up, but I do understand what that is. And it is probably one of the most, well, parental rights advocate in this, in this state or in country. I will say that I still stand by that. However, there is our obligation as an institution to prioritize in-personing and set policy as such. And so when, you know, when I thought through this, and I, I can think of a number of different opportunities, whether travel, a unique civic engagement, whether it's a swearing-in ceremony or, you know, inauguration, those are all decisions parents have to make and what that, you know, the, the risk reward factor is for their child and their academic impact and the civic, you know, significance to it. I think that there's two components here as a, as a public, as an education institution who, who I believe should and will and continue, and we have done such, to prioritize civic engagement. There are ways to do so in a benign, non-political way, but that really allows that robust understanding. My concern when we're talking specifically about the school board meetings, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to dive into that in a moment, is it gets to be a slippery slope, as would be any other civic engagement. I know you could be, I said, an inauguration, very, it's a very monumental moment, doesn't matter who's being sworn in. Or are we talking about a rally or the women's march? I mean, we could keep going on and on and I do not want to put any administrator in a position of having to evaluate what's going to be excused or unexcused because I can see that getting messy. And I actually think there's some historical components that did get some former or maybe current principals in quite a bit of trouble because of that. And so any way we can do away with making that a subjective decision for our administrators, I think that's what we're doing our job correctly. So I would, I support it not being included here. Again, being the parental rights component, I'm not, I think I made it clearly articulated, that still does not, is not diminished. It's incumbent upon the parents to make that decision. Now, what Mr. Edwards brought up, and I think this is valid, but again, how would we put this in where it is a balancing act? Is that the unexcused and the makeup work such that it's not burdensome to our staff? You can see if there was a member, you know, a family member that had a robust opportunity, they stayed under the habitual truant, truant component, but maybe it was five or six over the year and it was burdensome to staffs, that isn't completely fair. So what does that look like? I'm not entirely sure. I would defer to, to the superintendent on that. Do you have any comments?
Based on the way the policy is structured now, they would be awarded full credit for an excused absence. And they could be awarded full credit. I mean, it's really going to be up to the teacher on the unexcused portion of the makeup work. So partial credit is expected up to full credit and that is left to the teacher's discretion.
Okay. And I mean, and the only other thing I think about of something like that is, you know, those are the, the family, and this is just where my, my perspective is coming from. If you're going to something like that, you should know, whether it be a wedding or a civic component that we're talking about, any of those that would fall under unexcused absence, in the perfect world, which I, and I don't know if we can emphasize this or if it's more appropriate in procedures, is that that should be, you know, the excused or ability to make up work should be presented in advance, not after the fact. Because again, I think it's unfair to put the burden on the staff if, if, if that's an opportunity to again, support the academic achievement component, but understand the unexcused absence. And that's again, the risk factor that those families have to make. And I'm going to, I'm going to echo, but I'm going to be very specific with Mrs. Rose's comments. The, the consistent drumbeat of the changed time and the impact for students to be coming here and whether or not that wants to be excused, listen, if their families want to excuse that absence, as I just noted, that would be no different. And I think that the, the impact or quote unquote consequences shall remain the same. However, I think it has to be stated publicly that it is not just random acts of people wanting to come to speak at a public, at a school board meeting. This is very organized, organized by Social Equity and Education, a million-dollar funded organization locally that has actually prides itself on their 990. I, I don't know if any press would ever actually follow this. And I don't know if my other board members know this, but one of their components in their 990 is, is highlights that they are, they, they organize the largest student walkout in the country. That is very important, especially when we talk about attendance and especially as we hopefully will hinge on the next discussion about, as I raised, consequences for any kind of, any kind of, I don't care who's organizing it, but anyone who's organizing some kind of protest, walkout or political presentation or demonstration, because they have that right, but there will be consequences. And as, as policymakers, we have to be very really diligent about it. And I think it's unfortunate whether, again, whether my board members are aware of that or not, if you're not, you're being bamboozled and it's unfortunate because it's counterproductive to the academic focus that we should be all here for of trying to go out of the way to ensure that this, again, high, million-dollar funded, and you can do the due diligence and look, and it's a one primary funder, by the way, that spent a million dollars to support this organization with the intent of a political organization and organizing the youth and getting into our schools and to leverage our students for a political purpose. I, we all say we want politics out. You don't get more political than that with our stance. We are elected positions. There's going to be politics. I'm never one to put out the politic component. I don't want politics in our academics and I certainly don't want our schools for, whether right, left, purple, center, I don't care. I do not want them to be used at political activism centers and that is what is being done. And again, it is being done, it is well-funded, it is organized under the social equity and, and education. That is, that is the organization that comes in here. You can watch the orchestration. There's even things going on in the, out there that I'm very, I'm very concerned about. So I'm putting out there on the record to be very aware. You can bring up the old organizations of Moms for Liberty or whatever, those were never involved with students, they were never involved with, that we're seeing now. And I think it's highly, highly risky. And I for no one will absolutely not be looking at changing any policy to substantiate that. And I want to be crystal clear on that. With that said, I think that, I, I think that come, when it comes to the consistency piece, like I said, I think that's something we have to just evaluate as we move forward. And I think that we have, again, I think the excused versus unexcused, I'm, I'm happy with that. And I applaud you guys for your work, keeping it focused on ensuring and supporting our families who may be struggling to get their children to school. So with that, I will yield the floor to Mrs. Rose. Are you up next?
I'll be happy to be up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I want to add to your piece as well. Again, I want to reiterate the robust opportunities for civic opportunities that have been here and have, and are part of high-quality school systems. But in addition to the information that I've brought to light and you've brought to light, Madam Chair, I also would take that a step further and look and recommend to our community to look to see, when we look at to look to see, when we look at local organizations soliciting students for political reasons and the high funding, look at also that same funding supporting elected officials. So this is wrong. Our focus is academic achievement, absolutely the civics that is in our standards, but trying to change the context to solicit aggressively, and this is a fact, for students to participate in politics is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted, on a different tangent, on the civic engagement, I want to thank the civics teachers at Brookside and also at Riverview that have a specific assignment that the students have, and they email me and tell me exactly they would like to meet with me or Zoom with me, and these are the things. That is how the civic engagement, in my opinion, when it involves students, it should be teacher-directed and have to do with their activities, the student achievement. It's not coming to a school board meeting and blasting three of us, and then the other two are, everything's great, and that's what's happening. So I want to commend those teachers that are doing the civic engagement in the appropriate way, where students want to find out on a specific topic, how is that impacting me and how I deal with it? That is civic engagement. Civic engagement of coming to a board meeting with a pre-agenda is not civic engagement. And there is a big difference. And anybody, if you go back and you look at the history of school board meetings, two to three years ago, that never, ever took place. When I was a teacher, I would never have my students come to a school board meeting and, number one, address a school board member by their first name, and to use the tone of voice that they use, I would never condone that as a teacher. I would not have my students do that. As a school counselor, I would tell kids, I would work with them, here is the appropriate way to address an adult if you want to have change. Coming in and blasting them, calling them by their first name is not going to win and have anybody be opened. So there's been so much going on that, as a person that worked for this district, I've never seen it before. And I think it, and the word civic engagement is being twisted in a way it was never intended to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Wow. I said that about your data, I'll say it about, wow, three for three. So let me just say that I'm not sure that it's fair to talk about students and their civility in the boardroom, when often I find civility amongst the board members to be questionable. I'm glad that one of our board members brought up Moms for Liberty, because I saw for years Moms for Liberty hijack school board meetings. The distinction that I will give, that it didn't involve students. But Mr. Kirk's assassination directly involved students and a singular political party. And the only reason why I said from the beginning that I thought it was a great idea was because of its overarching civic engagement, and to stay out of it from a political party standpoint. So having endured the soliloquies of my colleagues, I'm going to return back to, I don't care why a parent is excusing an unexcused absence. I don't care what that is. It could be a school board meeting, it could be a wedding, it could be an inauguration. I'm asking for codification that a student, without having to lay it at the teacher's feet, if there is an excused written permission for an unexcused absence, that the teacher isn't put into a position of allowing for a makeup for full credit. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Barker.
I didn't quite anticipate the level of outrage that this would inspire, so let me clarify a little bit. I love Mr. Edwards' idea, because I think what a lot of parents are grappling with is this thought that particularly in this state, we prioritize parental rights, and we should have some form of meaningful parental rights. And to me, it is very different as a parent, if I'm saying I'm taking my children to a wedding, and I have written the note, and I've told the principal three days in advance, that is a very different situation than if my 14-year-old just decided to walk off campus. And I think honoring a parent's ability to make those decisions is important and valuable. And I think the Commissioner of Education sent us all a lovely communication about how we need to be prioritizing parental rights, how parents have the right to guide the instruction of their students, and I just think we ought to govern ourselves accordingly. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. As far as the unexcused and excused, I did not hear from Mrs. Marinelli or, excuse me, yeah, Mrs. Marinelli or Mrs. Rose, but I would echo the same thing, and as I articulated to the superintendent earlier, when it comes to unexcused, there's just, you know, they shouldn't be excused, but the makeup work or an opportunity, and giving that information in advance, and again, that still allows parents to have that right, they're the ones that all determine that, I stand in alignment there. Mrs. Barker mentioned walk off campus, that to me is a separate issue, that was on a different policy, I was highlighting that as to, so that's unrelated to this policy, I was highlighting it to the consequences in a other policy that I believe we need to evaluate. But Mr. Connor, if you have clarity, or if there is an additional way we can articulate it from the unexcused absence with a parental, with a note, with parental approval, is there something that can be added? So that is not burdensome, though, again.
I am following the conversation, and I think I have a good grasp of what the goal is, but I want us to consider the teacher's rights as well.
And that's why.
And so I think this policy has to consider that if a kid is unexcused, it is up to that teacher to allow for full credit. So I think we need to, we need to find the middle ground between parental rights, the teacher's rights, and where that balance is. And I think right now where we're at in the policy, I feel is, is a pretty good spot, because it allows for an unexcused absence to be given at the teacher's discretion up to full credit of the assignment. And, you know, I do feel like it's a great place to be where it currently stands, and it meets both the teacher's rights and responsibilities of, you know, educating of their students, as well as parental rights to make personal decisions about when to be absent or present. So I feel personally like where it stands is in a good spot, but I'm willing to keep moving this forward if we feel, if we don't have consensus on that.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable.
Because that was my worry, because it could get to a slippery slope where it then becomes burdensome and unfair to the educator. Mrs. Marinelli?
Just to give some historical background of why family trips and vacations are unexcused, there was a time when parents would take vacations in January or February, and they might be gone for two weeks, and the burden fell upon the teacher to have to give work ahead of time. So working, I was at a school at that time, working with district staff, because they could look at the data and see that these were vacations, not illness. So that's why that was put in. And originally, it was if you had an unexcused absence, you could not make up the work. Well, that was changed over the years, that yes, you could make up the work, and I agree with that. So it's a fine line of you have a right as a parent to take your child anywhere you want to, but the school has the right to be able to say, is this going to be excused or unexcused? Because we already saw the data with the impact of just being out one day, how that adds up to missing that achievement. And just because a teacher gives the work doesn't mean it's what is referred to, you know, cheeks in the seats. But it's, we need the kids there, because if we open that door, then another parent's going to say, well, what about me? What about me? So you have to be consistent, and it has to be what it is. And a parent can do whatever they want to with their child, as far as having them go to school or not. But here are the rules, and here are the pluses, and here are the consequences if you don't. So I am fine with this, because I've seen it when it wasn't as tight, and if we can make it tighter and give specific examples, so we don't put the teachers on the spot, and even for principals, because nobody likes to get in that, that role of, well, this is the way it is, and this is what the policy says. But the more that we can give examples and be consistent, then the more that this will help at the school level. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
First off, let me commend the board for finding a level of consensus. I've enjoyed the dialogue. I think what I'm hearing, and what I want to avoid, is Mrs. Barker's quagmire. So for example, if it was a wedding, and she was talking to three different teachers, theoretically, she could get three different answers. So what I was trying to avoid was putting a teacher and a parent in that situation. But at the same time, I hear Mr. Connor and teachers and teacher rights, who are, you know, how I feel about teachers and the work that they do above and beyond the call of duty. I think the key word here is proactive. So if the conversation is proactive by the parent with the teacher, that the teacher has an opportunity, if it's, if it is problematic, to share it with their administration, figure out what that could be, because I don't want to put a teacher or anyone like that in conflict, or asking them to do significant work above and beyond the call of duty. But what we're, I think, trying to drive to is that when a parent feels that this is the right decision for their child, for whatever the reasons are, that that should be honored, and the work should be, have the ability to be made up. That's what, so somewhere in there, if there's a proactive conversation with the teacher by the parent, either by note or email or whatever, that gives that teacher some advanced notice to that situation, I think that's a great compromise, because I hear both sides of the, of the conversation. Yeah, I, I think teachers, I want to keep in consideration the amount of preparation it takes to not only deliver a daily lesson, but then to also have to take the one-off proactivity of parents who are choosing to pull their child out, preparing lessons, makeup work, whatever, ahead of time. It become, it really does begin to snowball when you're talking, I have 150, 175 students, and then I've got three or four this week that are doing that, and I'm preparing a lesson, then I'm proactively providing maybe makeup assignments or work in advance. So I think I always want to put the power back in the teacher's hands. We, we're going to be very clear as a district to say, what's excused and what's not, and what's unexcused? That's a clear expectation for everyone, so teachers don't have to decide what's excused and unexcused. It is unexcused. By leaving the provision of unexcused, may result in the loss of full credit opportunities, but still has the opportunity to receive some type of credit up to full credit, if the teacher desires. I don't want to put the teachers in a position where they lose the autonomy to make that decision, because honestly, there's only a few holy grails that you don't ever want to touch when it comes to the classroom, and telling a teacher how to grade assignments becomes one of those issues. There's not a lot of power, other than, you know, the power of the grade, and obviously there's very limited in that. And so that's where I'm 100% in agreement with the idea of what's being presented by the board here. How we land there, I want to make sure that we're totally considering the autonomy for that teacher to make that full decision. And that could be, honestly, and so in the case of the wedding, right, it's an unexcused, in my opinion, that's an unexcused absence, period. Doesn't matter what teacher decides, that's what we have decided as a policy. But there could be a scenario where one teacher says, I'll give you full credit. One teacher says, nope, I'm not giving you full credit, I'll give you 50%. So if we want to dive into mandating that piece of that, I think it gets into encroaching on the autonomy of teachers, and that's where I get a little bit worried, if that makes sense. Now, we could provide ranges, we could come up with a policy and say, if you're doing a test and a kid's absent, and you've had this arrangement proactively, you could give them 50 to 100% credit, but then you're starting to really slice that apple 100 different ways. And so it's, you know, that's where my hesitancy comes in. I want to try to keep as much autonomy and the power in the hands of the teacher in this decision. But I agree, if the teacher decides, hey, listen, you can make it up for full 100% credit, absolutely allow that to happen. I don't know if that clarifies anything or just makes this conversation that much muddier, but that's kind of where I'm at with, how much do we really want to dictate in the
Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm in full agreement with you, Superintendent Connor. Teachers are in the trenches, and they have to have the autonomy of that piece, and that isn't necessarily what I was agreeing to, that we dictate that. I don't think that that is our role to dictate that. What I do agree with is the being proactive, I think, is essential, and not just proactive on the parent's part. I know as a principal, for years, everyone's decision, and if we're talking about in the form of parental rights, to take a trip outside of the calendar vacations that are on the school board calendar with parent input, that we as principals and schools and districts that we're proactive on what it means when you do that. And I, my experience with teachers is that they're, they don't necessarily want to operate in isolation, it becomes the communication of the school, and the school communicating the autonomy of that teacher, and that teacher knows that family best and that student, and we don't, I don't, as an individual board member, want to make those decisions. That is a teacher-based decision. So I want to clarify, I wasn't saying take the autonomy away from the teachers at all. I think that this continued communication was important. Thank you.
And I'm just going to chime in really quickly. I agree. I think that, again, the parental rights and responsibility is something I want to get really focused on saying, because I think it's also incumbent upon the kind of, what expectations we leave for our students. And when you have an unexcused absence, but that's, and it's opportunity, whether it be, again, a unique opportunity, a family opportunity, whatever, we know it falls under the unexcused absence, but I do believe the proactive nature is always a best practice, because it comes forward in good faith. It's not, oh, whoops, we didn't show up for a couple of days, sorry. I just think that's something that is just, again, not that it gives you extra guarantee you're going to get full credit, but it is a good way of teaching our students how to, you know, prepare and be, and communicate, point frankly. And I also think that it always, when I think about it, from my daughter's perspective of what I've dealt with, there are times where there's a bigger project, and it would be, you know, you, again, it's, is that risk or reward that's really on the family's role, and not asking necessarily for that teacher? role and not asking necessarily for that teacher to take on more. But in some cases, it's not, because the variety of grades or classes have different impacts or different assignments at any given time. So I can see that being very difficult to put in policy. And I think, again, we have the clear excuse versus unexcused. I like where, I know, Mr. Edwards, where you're trying to go, and I think that, again, if there's something that can be communicated more on a procedural aspect of, a best practice is that proactive notification. However, there's no guarantee, and I do think that protecting that autonomy is important. And it really just is incumbent upon what that workload is and what that current assignment is. And then it's really incumbent upon that family to make that final decision, what they believe is best, or maybe they stay back an extra day, I'm not sure. So that's where I stand. Mrs. Marinelli, sorry, I jumped ahead of you.
That's all right, thank you. I just want to clarify too, you know, it's all about relationships. And the students and their parents, they have that relationship with the teacher. And the teacher needs to be able, she knows that student better than any of us, and they're going to make that decision. And that's the way it should be. And I think legislatively, and Mr. Pinto, you can, maybe it's changed, but it states in the legislation that only the teacher can give the grade or change the grade. The principal can't change it, the guidance counselor, the school counselor can't change it, a school board member cannot change it. Only the teacher. And they need that autonomy and they need to be able to build that relationship. You can't change it either. Oh, you can?
I can.
I wouldn't think you would want to, though.
No, not at all.
I don't think anybody wants to get in there changing a teacher's grade, but that, they, maybe you shouldn't have even said anything.
Don't worry, I know. It's the holy grail, you do not touch a teacher's grade.
Do not do it. And you don't even put pressure on a teacher to do it. So they have, they need to be able to form that relationship with the student and the parent. This will be the guideline to it, that they can follow. And I don't want it to, anybody to go out here and say, oh, Ms. Marinelli doesn't think the teacher should be able to blah, blah, blah. I'm a former teacher. I don't want somebody telling me what I can do and not do when it comes to my students as long as I'm following all the guidelines and all the rules. So the teachers need that autonomy and they have to have that relationship. So I'm glad to hear that the legislation hasn't changed, that the teachers, that, because they're the ones that know that student. And sometimes when they're absent, they understand things that will never be told to anybody else. And that's okay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
So I think we're pretty close. I really was speaking on behalf of the teacher and trying to protect the teacher from a situation, but, and I want to make sure that teachers hear that. I wanted it so they don't have to sit there and maybe say, well, it should only be a 50% because, so forth. But in that regard, what I really would love is that if a teacher said, I'm only going to allow you to make it up 50%, then the family responds by getting more engaged and find out why, because there obviously is a situation that needs to be addressed. And that's why I was really leaning towards the conversation being proactive with an excuse. I have been a school board member where we did debate going to veil for two weeks in February, and should that be excused or unexcused? I get that. That's a, that is, that's a tough one. And so I certainly don't want to impose a teacher's rights in that regard. But I will say that I don't find our policies to be consistent for teachers and their autonomy, because we do have a policy that says when a parent objects to a lesson plan or a particular backup to a lesson plan, that if the parent objects, the teacher is forced and must accommodate that teacher or that parent request. So it's not a consistent policy, that's what I, or a consistent approach. And that's what I want to make sure that we're, we understand that in this particular case, but we're not, but I think we accommodated the fact that if parents want their student to proactively be excused, there's a great opportunity that they could make it up 100%. Not a promised opportunity, but a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rose.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Edwards, and I appreciate it. I just want to clarify that that isn't in general, everyday terms, where a parent can say, I want a different lesson plan. When a teacher is addressing the state mandated standards of what a student should know and be able to do within those standards, that's one piece. The piece that I believe that you are referencing is when it comes to sensitive material that is to, that a teacher is choosing to use. For example, a novel to back up a standard, and it may have something sensitive in it to that family, and that isn't necessarily a district or state approved material, then those optional plans can be requested. That's my understanding. I just want to reiterate that we are giving the message to parents that you can request a change in everyday lesson plan standard, state-driven.
Thank you for that clarification and thank you for the, just the discussion overall. I think, Mr. Connor stated, you feel that we have covered where we're at?
So I think it has been a very robust discussion. I feel like where we're at currently with the policy fits a lot of what we're trying to accomplish, unless I'm hearing otherwise.
No. And then again, I think, I mean, it's all, some of the nuances that they'll come down to communication and leadership as far as that goes. I do want to make one piece of clarification. I do think it's actually pretty critical. When we use the term civic engagement, and I think this is actually really important when I think of any of our administrators or teachers, or even, you know, what's allowed when it comes to approved field trips or a school sanctioned activity, there's a difference between civic engagement and activism, right? That's the biggest part. And so, Mrs. Marinelli used a great example of what I would call like a benign but active activity. But, you know, even our after-school clubs, if there was some kind of day trip, I don't believe, I don't know, but I mean, it would fall on the administrator, or Mr. Connor, you could articulate. But at any given time, I can't imagine that some activity, unless there are participating, it's a chess club, for example, and they're in a competitive situation, I don't know at any time when they would be, when it would be an excused absence for them to participate in some kind of activity. And the reason I highlight that is the Club America, Mr. Edwards, you kind of alluded to them. And again, my piece here is that there is a sacred component about the attendance during a school day. And then, you know, us finding a policy to give allowances for people to come to a school board meeting, and that being tied, you know, cited as civic engagement, where I would argue it's bordering over to the activism side. And so anytime anything's approved or school sanctioned, whether it be a field trip or a, I mean, a sports thing, I can't think of an activism standpoint. I mean, we would not approve that. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Connor?
So I do want to clarify, because what I thought I heard you say was that, you know, a club, a club could have a school sanctioned, there could be an approved event, a field trip during the school day, use chess club as an example, barring that it has to meet the requirements of a field trip, right? There's usually an alignment to standards, there's levels of approval that this goes to, just like when we go out of county or out of state, it rises all the way to the level of the board, you approve them every month. So there are opportunities for clubs to have school sanctioned, sponsored field trips during the school day, so.
Understood. Thank you for that. And then, just as if a teacher were going to allow, I mean, I don't even know if this would fall into, I've heard about this in other districts, this is not Sarasota County, I want to be very clear, but allowing for extra credit for a student to go to some kind of rally or to go petition their state legislature, I mean, that, I believe, would not be allowed. And I would hope it wouldn't be allowed, because that is on activism. Is that a fair statement?
That would be correct. I don't know the specifics of that example you used, but if that hasn't gone through a level of approval, that would not be allowed.
Okay. And I say that because I believe everyone up here, and I certainly know the state takes it very seriously, and it was articulated earlier, or is referenced, that I don't want to diminish, and I'm not going to shy away from it, the civic engagement is very important. It's something we want to instill in our students, and we want our activities to support that, and we passed a resolution on that. But that is different than activism. There are very two different components, and I think that's where the distinction needs to be clarified. So, anyway, thank you for that. There are no comments on this. I think we are now moving on to...
If I may, for one point of clarity, just because there's a lot of legal requirements to the rulemaking and advertising. When Mr. Pinto was presenting in the presentation, there was, at Roman numeral two, you had talked about what counts as being present for a full school day, at least in the version that I received, and I might not have the most recent one, had it been stricken. Is that, is the intent to keep that in?
Mr. Pinto?
No. As a point of clarification on that, Mr. Duggan, no, we are taking out those minutes requirements, because within our new student information system, we are able to report it by period, and how we report it out to the state goes out that way. So it's not by the minutes requirements, it is reported by period for daily attendance.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So just to read it, the Roman numeral two, teachers must input student attendance on a daily basis, et cetera, et cetera, and the other items are stricken. Is that correct?
All of two A was stricken.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
And now there's a new A, two A is accumulated tardies and early departures without an adequate excuse will be recorded as prescribed by district procedures.
Right. And that is to Mr. Pinto's point around the student information system by period.
Perfect. And that would be on our next board meeting for advertisement?
We would advertise at the next board meeting and then do the 28-day period and then bring it forth in January-ish, February.
All right. Seeing no additional comments, thank you again, board members, for a very robust conversation. Then we move to committee assignments, which you all have a piece of paper that, just to remind everyone, so the only committee, there's two committees, actually, the value adjustment board, we are statutorily required to have a representative, and then we have a representative and a alternate. And the audit selection committee, but we also have an audit committee that is required I'm pretty sure we have an audit committee. It's the selection and then you have the committee, it's in statute. Can you, Mr. Duggan? I noticed that. So we, well, I'll put that aside, because it selects, but then it's an audit committee, and it does require the two CPAs. A board, it has to have a board member serve as chair, the CFO is ex officio, non-voting member. But it's not just selection committee, I think it's also just a committee, if I am, Mrs. Tompkins.
I'll double-check on that, but it's my understanding that it's the audit selection committee, but we'll, I'll check on that.
I believe they do the selection, and then they get the reports, and then they bring the report back. But we have not had that for a while. So, yeah, if we can clarify, we may have to revisit that one, so that we'll put aside. And then the financial advisory committee, one committee member appointed by each board. So we'll start with value adjustment, because that one we know we need. Does anyone want to serve on the value? It's, they meet about quarterly down at the downtown, at the board, usually, but Board and County Commission. Mrs. Marinelli? Who wants to be an alternate?
I'll alternate with her.
Okay, Mrs. Rose? And then, that's the only requirement statutorily. Again, we'll check on the audit committee. The financial advisory committee, what do you need from us at this point?
I don't believe, everyone has a representative, correct? Okay, so if you're all in favor of maintaining your representation on that, then we'll continue on with that. And then I would say on the audit selection committee, there's also a representative from each district there. So if you want to make a change or present something, we can bring that back, maybe at a next workshop. If you want to talk about it, we'll do the due diligence on the audit committee investigation to make sure we're good there.
Investigation. Okay, perfect. Well, I just, I know we do need at least a chair. Mr. Enos was at one point the chair. I'm happy to be the chair, but I just clarify what the title is and what that looks like and the meeting of frequency. I know the selection process and the appointment process, so we'll get clarity on that. So are there any comments or questions on that? I know that Mr. Connor will get us more information on the other. All righty. Well, that brings, that concludes our agenda items, and then that leaves us at board member comments. Does anyone have any comments? Mrs. Barker?
You talked to me even before I waited. I just have two things I want to highlight for the board. The first is, I think we all received an email, but I thought it interesting, the idea of having some form of parent advisory council. I think, you know, we have a staff advisory council, we have our star students who come to speak to us, but there isn't necessarily an organized, meaningful opportunity for parents to provide input to the board and the superintendent and the district in general. We do have, of course, our school advisory committees. But I just, I wanted to elevate that for discussion, because I think when we're talking about parental rights and everything else, it would be an interesting thing to examine further. So that's the first thing I wanted to chat about. And then, this is just something to put on the radar for the district, and I'm sure I saw this right before the break, and I almost emailed Mr. Pinto, and then I said, no, he probably already knows it all about it. But the Department of Health will be meeting, I believe, next week on the 12th to look at changes to the rules around required immunizations for school students. And while my understanding is that only two of those immunizations are not also required by law, I do, would like for us to be aware as a board that this could be something that we have to talk about and discuss further. We do have a fairly vulnerable population in Sarasota County. Our vaccination rate for incoming kindergarteners last year was 79.9% versus the overall state, which is 88.7%. And of course, the country is at around 92%. So I do, I would like to just have that conversation, because no one wants any sort of public health crisis, I wouldn't imagine. So that's, those are the two things I wanted to chat about.
Very good. Thank you so much. Mrs. Marinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate the psychologists for winning or getting the award for having the most innovative programs and innovative strategies. I had mentioned it maybe two months ago, that they were up for the award, but they, our school psychologists in the student support services, they were awarded it. And so congratulations to them and the fine work that they do for our students and helping the schools. And I think it's just a very pride, because I don't believe they've ever gotten that award before. So congratulations to our school psychologists.
Thank you for that. Are there any more comments? Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. At one of our last, I don't recall if it was a workshop or a board meeting, but in member comments, I had requested the opportunity to put a glossary of terms on the website. What is a charter school? What is a charter school for profit? What is a school for hope? All of those, so that the parents could have a place to get to and understand what their choices are and what, how they fall, and that they can make informed decisions.
I'm just going to, I'm one, I'll just respond. I have hesitation with the language, the for-profit piece. And I say this because I think it's utilized in a way that's convoluted and I think somewhat misleading. This is just my personal opinion. I think if you were at the Tiger Bay piece, I think it was almost articulated the right way of, when you start to get to that for-profit piece, I mean, you look at our agenda, the school board approves number of contracts, of which are for-profit entities. There are charter schools that have management companies that are for-profit. And so I find that kind of language personally, I would borderline inflammatory, because I think it's utilized in a way that's kind of misleading. And then what does that say about us if we contract, if we contract for services that are with any organization that's for-profit? I mean, those are the areas. I understand that there is an argument... mean, those are, those are the areas, I understand that there is an argument on, to me, I think we can put out information, I think that's largely why we can, when we approve charters, we have that public conversation, so it allows for the public to understand that board, to understand their mission as best as possible, and then really, it's incumbent upon parents to make that final decision, I believe that, again, just one board member responding to this, I, I have hesitation on putting those things in, because I'm fine with, because I feel like it will, I don't know who's crafting that language, and I just, I think, I just start with the for-profit piece, I think it's inflammatory and not necessarily fair when you consider who and how we operate as, as a school district, when we contract services, there are many that are for-profit, and that is really the slice and dicing of the, the charter school piece, that's just where I stand, Mrs. Rose?
I am in full agreement with you, Madam Chair, I believe there's biases built into those definitions, that, you know, for-profit can, has a huge span from multitude of pieces, and I, I don't think that that is our job to start defining what a parent's perception should be of any charter school, from my standpoint, it's the quality of the programming, the academic achievement, the match to meet your child's needs to the highest standard, and the point at which that we, as a board, start to dictate definitions, that I believe have just a tremendous amount of bias in them, and potential, and are potentially inflammatory, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, I, I, even, I was at Tiger Bay, and I thought the rationale of, we do contract with companies that are for-profit, was not a valid argument, but here, here's where I stand on this, because we understand what the will of the board will be or not be, so what I, what I'm really suggesting is that our informed parents make better choices for public education, and since we're in the business of attracting parents to enjoy public education, informing them as to what all of the options are, certainly, the board could hand-select which term or which, but I, I still think it's a great idea to create a, a unbiased term for as many schools and types of schools that are available to be utilized with a voucher, so that we start creating informed parents making wise choices, hopefully at our Sarasota County schools.
Parents are going to make choices based on the needs of their child, the academic achievement, the programming, the quality of the school, not because we have told them what our individual definitions are of their options, I want, and have dedicated my entire adult career to Sarasota County Public Schools, with a waiting list at every single school that I've had the opportunity to serve at, and it was never, ever telling parents what to think, it was giving them opportunities that met their students' needs, and, and as one individual board member, that's where I think that we're going to enlist parents to come to our public schools and stay with our public schools, and I have to say, that is exactly what Superintendent Connor and his team are recommending in the innovation that we're bringing back, that quite frankly, in my opinion, wasn't here for a multitude of years, since Lori White, Superintendent Lori White left, so if we're going to advertise something, it is my preference, and I would look to the consensus of the board, it's the innovation that's coming to the table, and honestly, what I'd also like to see, speaking of that, I would like to see, if I was going to make a recommendation, and there was consensus within the board, would be for the superintendent and his team to use our media to highlight the successes in academic achievement as we go through the year, and, and to point out the successes that we're having, that's what draws people in, I have zero interest in, in giving what I consider to be biased definitions of what parents should choose, thank you.
Thank you, I, yeah, I, I, I think our effort is best served if we're highlighting what we provide to the, to the table, if we are marketing and showcasing the great work and the unique innovative schools that are about to come online, I think that we do best when we're speaking about the product that we are offering, I think that is, I think it's above reproach, I think that it will speak volumes, and I think that it will be much better received, quite frankly, I think there are other avenues that individual board members certainly can, can utilize on, on their own, to try to showcase and try to make those differentiations based on what their personal beliefs is, I just don't think it's the appropriate place for the school board, or the, the district to do, that's just my personal opinion as well, Mr. Edwards, you're on.
I would certainly hope that we are always highlighting our successes, I think that should go without mention, and I look at our stellar Crackerjack Communications Head for that purpose, and then I formally withdraw my request.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, Mrs. Marinelli?
I was just going to say, I want our district, our, our district-managed schools to be highlighted, and let parents know that these are your options within our own district, and if we do list the charter schools, because they are part of the public school system, we just put charter, 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 so they, they can see that here is what all we're doing, but I don't think it's our role to highlight whatever, and I'm not saying that you suggested that, Mr. Edwards, but I don't think it's our role to highlight what each of those charter schools do, we just let them know that that's a charter, and I don't think they probably want us promoting.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent?
Great conversation, I, I do believe, and I'm, I'm going against the grain here, I do believe there's value in, in sharing with the public what each are, and I think you have to do that in an unbiased way, and I think the way that you could achieve that, because when I say charter, I can ask, and I won't put us all on the spot, but if I asked all five of you, what is a charter school? I get frequently from the public, a misunderstanding that the governance structure, that I govern charter schools as the superintendent, which is not true, right? And so, if we decide what components we want to delineate, for instance, at a charter school, that is a tuition-free public school, there are people in the community who don't know that, but it's not governed by the district, so it's not a district-managed school, so if we're clear about what we want to define, I think we can avoid any political or biased or any types of definitions, but I don't think, I think it actually would be beneficial for our community to know, a charter school operates independently, so that when there are issues, it has its own governing board, day-to-day operations are managed by the, the charter, not the school district, those are some aspects that I think would be valuable, but I will take direction from the board, but I, I do see that there could be some benefit to doing that, in a way, that doesn't create an us versus them, you do it very, this is what it is, this is a mission criteria, this is what tuition would cost, right? Because there, you know, we can define, private school typically charges tuition, charter schools do not, public schools, you know, district-managed traditional do not charge, how did you entry, what's the entry mechanism into getting into one of those schools? So that could be very clearly defined, almost as, the way I would see this or envision it, would be a table, here are the criteria, funding, tuition, governance, how you are admitted into the school, what's the accountability, we know that for public schools and charter schools, they are under the state accountability system, but a private school is not, and I don't see the harm in showing those features, those components, in, in a, an unbiased way, and I think it actually would raise our profile as a school district, to show all of the good things we're doing, because if I asked you what a charter school was, what a magnet school was, what a school of choice is, what a reassignment is, what a traditional public school is, there are so many, the, the landscape has exploded, and bringing clarity to the community, I think would actually be rather beneficial, if we do it in a way, because I do hear the concerns being raised by this board, and I, and 100% agree with that, words matter, how we define it matters, but I think there is a way we can get there, and of course, we would get obviously consensus on that if we wanted to move that forward.
When Mrs. Marinelli was talking about the charter piece, I then, because there, we include them in our school grade, I mean, there's a, a number of, obviously, we subcontract, we contract with them for transportation, as we noted earlier, and I immediately was thinking, I do think there is validity in share, now, there are board changes, and I don't want us to, I don't know if, how much we're navigating that, but, and having to keep up with that, but I do think there's, there is value in letting the public know that they are, they operate under, obviously, we have a charter of state, they have to follow state and federal law, but they have a separate governance, governing, they have a separate board, governing board, that's, I think, important, so that from the flow of information and, and oversight, that they know where to go, I mean, and we can all say that we've certainly received emails from family members who, or parents who are frustrated with something that's occurring, and it's a charter school, and then nothing, you always feel bad, you're like, I can't help you, I mean, however, you can direct them in some ways, but, and provide some advice, but, so I'm fine with that, I think that, you know, I, I think information, I just worry that, at least particularly when we're using certain language, it comes off unbecoming, I guess, and that's where I don't, I want us to stay away from, I don't know what you would propose when you're going on to, I mean, yes, if you're talking about magnet, all of the other ones, I mean, because they're all under our jurisdiction, but that's, I guess it's to be determined, in my, in my personal opinion, Mrs. Barker?
Thank you, I appreciate that idea, because honestly, I get questions literally every day, what is a charter, how do, what's the difference, how do I get into it, what's the difference between a voucher, I mean, people, parents are genuinely confused, and so, in an era when they're, we are going to even be offering more options, you know, we're talking about Brookside now being a dedicated steam magnet, and so I think it behooves us to be very clear with our parents about what that means, how that's different, how you apply for it, I, I, I think, I think as we continue to expand school choice, it will only become more and more important that we're very clear about what we offer, how, and what it looks like, the only thing I might add is, I, I also think, as, as a parent who was, you know, at one point looking, you know, Suncoast Charter versus Lakeview versus, these are choices that parents make every year, even sometimes throughout the year, it would have been helpful to me to have a hyperlink to school grade data or achievement data for various schools, even if it just goes back to the Department of Education website, anything that can help parents make more informed decisions, I think is really useful, so.
Well, I, would, any other comments on that?
I would say too, sorry to change the subject, going back to Ms. Barker's point around the parent advisory council that was brought up, that is definitely something that we've been discussing, we've got some great councils already up and running with our teacher advisory, we've got our star students, we've got to close the loop with our parents, and so we are, we're going to work on having a district parent advisory council.
Thank you for circling back on that, yes.
Thank you.
And I look forward to that presentation, I, I will say something, you mentioned on the school grades piece, and I, I don't know if Mr. Parento also heard this, as we note, that piece of legislation was introduced last session, there's, I've heard more conversation around it, that it has actually more, the, that it's not specifically only going to be on academics, that it's going to, would enlist a number of different metrics, including safety data, a number of other elements, I don't know if that, that you've heard that yet, and, but I do understand it's coming, going to be coming back around, and that it will, I, I, that's all, I didn't know if that, you brought that up, and I was thinking, I was just thinking about that, so, yeah, go ahead.
So, I, I think the conversation, and where it has turned, is if there is going to be any changes to the scales for school grades, whether it's 90 to 100 for an A, 80 to 90 to a B, there has to be some change in how those components are calculated within that model, and potentially, not necessarily, as the, the term the legislature likes to use, is building the plane while it's in the air, right? Getting all of that figured out on the front end, rather than doing it while you're in that rolling phased implementation of that, so I think that's part of the, the back and forth that's happening right now, from what I've heard, is trying to figure out what that looks like in terms of the school grade components, if there are going to be changes to the scales.
Okay, very good, I just thought the component about not just looking at the academics of it, but financial, financial stability, there was a component proposed about the safety data, et cetera, so that it's a transparent, so when you're talking about parents making decisions, having as much transparency as possible, I can, it really needs to be hashed out, I could see a lot of, you know, I'll just keep my, we'll see what happens with that, did you have anything else? Mrs. Rose, are you on here, I'm sorry, I just kinda...
That's okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I think that we should have more conversation with what kind of definitions or rubric, I'm not opposed to providing, obviously, information and knowledge, I am opposed to only selecting certain things, or adding what I would consider to be political biases of, you know, defining what's for profit and what isn't, you can go through layers of research, and there's a lot of profit everywhere that may or may not be determined there, I think the other thing too, is if we're going to do something like that, I don't want to be, I don't think there should ever be where we're trying to convince people to come to public schools, we shouldn't have to convince them, we should be the best choice, and that's why they're coming, so if we were going to do something of that nature, I would also look to defining what the, the scholarships are to take your tax dollars with you, if we're going to offer and define all the different choices, and perhaps, I, I think it's, you know, worthy to the achievement that goes into each one of those options, what kind of achievement you're looking at, for example, I had a parent looking at high school choices from middle school, and she was looking at the SAT scores, what was the average SAT score, and I will say that our high schools had the highest average out of the private options, which I was proud of, but there's different ways to do this, to, to lend knowledge, but I would also look to, if we're going to define all the choices, we should give parents the route to make those choices, and again, choosing as we're the most innovative programmatically and have the highest achievement results, not because we've put bias into those definitions.
I, yes, I would concur with that, so if, if there wants to be more discussion, or Mr. Connor, if you want to propose something in media in our one-on-ones to get a better sense of what that looks like, that will allow us to make some final decisions to move forward. All right, well, if there are no additional comments, I just had it up, our next date is December, okay, so we, tonight, we have the Insight Community meeting at 6 o'clock at Booker High School, and our next board meeting is on December 16th at, making sure, 10 a.m., with 9 a.m. starting with the star students, I believe, is that still standing? With Q and A, and if there are no additional comments, we are adjourned.